Amber, are you with us?
I am here.
Awesome. I'm going to call the Wednesday, November 8th, 2023 meeting of the Essex Junction City Council order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
There is an additional executive session discussion around.
Great. Anything else from the board? No? I'll make it taken a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
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 As opposed, nay. Passes. Great. Public to be heard. This is a portion of the city council meeting set aside for public comment on topics that are not on the meeting agenda for this evening. This, there will be an opportunity for public input as part of each agenda item throughout the evening and after the council discussion and before any action is taken on that item. This is not intended as a discussion period, this upcoming public to be heard section. Please address your comments to the chair, not to individual council members or guests in the meeting. If you pose a question, we may answer it. We may choose to answer it in a different form at a different time, based on the information we have right now. Can I get a sense of how many folks want to speak right now for this portion of the meeting by hand? You, sir? How about online? Anyone online? Want to have any comments during this portion of the meeting? Give it a second for people to respond. One? Okay.
I'm sorry, the, uh, the session for the public to be heard, I, my phone broke up. Has that already passed?
No, we're about to do it. We're about to do it. I'm just asking for a sense of how many people want to speak at this point.
Okay, I would be, I would be one of them. Thank you.
All right, sure. I'll call on you because all I can see is iPhone, so that'll be you. And then you can identify yourself at that point. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, why don't we start in the room? If you'd like to come up, if you don't mind coming up to the chair and saying your name for the note taker, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm John Willie. I was asked from, by some, the folks that use the senior center, just to say a couple of things, maybe some questions that have come up and they appreciated Brad meeting with them last week and trying to answer some questions. And I think sometimes the anxiety rises from either, maybe, if there's a, if there's a resolution, you know, maybe the communication of that resolution to folks, or, you know, there's either, in my experience, it's either, maybe there is a resolution, but it just hasn't been communicated that well, or maybe the resolution isn't something that is, you know, what they're looking for. So I, I kind of understand, number one, I think there's two issues. One, I think they want to know on January 2nd, where they go, where are they gonna be? So I kind of understand that the construction is still in flux on when that's gonna start and things like that. But I think anything that can be communicated to the, to the folks that use, use the senior center every day, that would really be a good step in the right direction. Just as far as, you know, and even if it's, it just seems like, even at this point, okay, maybe the construction doesn't start till February 2nd, you know, whenever it might start, well, where are we gonna be? And I think that's, that's kind of gets folks a little, you know, just a little concerned right now. So that would be appreciated. And then the, the other one is, again, we've talked about this at a meeting before earlier this year, just on the transportation. So I saw in the, in the article that came out that, you know, they talked about you need a a, you know, doctor's, doctor's known or whatever. So again, I think the question is, are we gonna have, is the van gonna work like it does now? That kind of convenience, that kind of service where the driver, again, I know if it's SSTAA, they're not as personable, but these, these drivers today haven't talked to them probably two or three times. They, they treat these folks that they pick up like family almost, you know, so that's, that's kind of what they're used to. And I think the question is, how, how is this thing gonna work? And so, again, kind of at this point, is there, is there an agreement between the city of Essex Junction and, and SSTAA? Is it in place? And what do I actually do on January, on January 1st or January 2nd, whenever we start using this thing? What do I do? You know, so I, I actually made a call over there just, I was trying to figure it out myself and, you know, not their fault, but somebody there didn't really have any idea what I was asking for, you know, they told me they had credit cards now and you know, you could donate and things like that, but they couldn't answer the question about, you know, this particular thing. So I don't know if, if, I know how SSTAA works generally. You schedule it if you, if you need that service and they, and there's a charge and those kind of things. So anyway, I think that's clarifying how's the transportation gonna work for me on January 1st is, is something that's missing right now. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone else in the room that wants to say anything on this topic? iPhone, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Would you mind just saying your name, where you're from, and proceeding with your comments?
Sure. My name is Kevin Kavanaugh. I live at One South Street Lane, Essex Junction, and my concern is regarding plowing. It appears that this is the only street that is not plowed within the routes. According to the winter operations plan of 2021 to 2022, I don't know if there's an updated one or not, but it shows a map of blue, green, and red routes. Beside, besides HOAs, we are the only one that doesn't get plowed by the town. And I am just trying to see what the reason is for that and if we can get that remedied. I do see that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I thought you were done for a second. I just wanted you to repeat the street.
One South Street Lane.
All right, thank you.
Sure. And if further reading, reading into that winter operations plan, it seems that the city uses contractors for several streets. And and it actually lists a whole bunch of contractors that can be used. And I am just, yeah, I'm just wondering if we could get a contractor, if need be, to plow this single small street for us.
If you have information on that, that would be useful.
South Street Lane is similar to Gaines Court where they, those are both private streets, and so those are not actual municipal streets. And so as such, the water line underneath it, the roadway on top of it, and the plowing and maintenance of that are the responsibility of those of you who live on those streets. So that's why.
The, the sign, the sign doesn't say private way, though. But you're telling me it is a private street?
Yep.
Interesting. Can we get a new, a new road sign then that says private way?
Excellent question. You have a lot of good questions this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Not having firsthand knowledge of who provides those, if I wouldn't give me your contact information right now, but if you email.
You can email me.
Our, it's R Mahoney@EssexJunction.org, R M A H O N Y.
Okay.
Regina Mahoney is our city manager and she can point you in the right direction.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think the only other person is Annie Cooper.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to speak about two things. The first being the senior center, senior budget and senior van topic. I know that, I know that you know also that there were two checks received by the Village of Essex Junction on July 1st of 2016, one check totaling $13,279.40 and a second check totaling $12,235,034. The total coming to That money was a check written by the Essex Area Senior Center. There is no signed documentation in the village office for that amount of money. There does seem to be an MOU at the town office that does not have a designated village signature on it. It does have Pat Shidell's signature on it as a town manager. There is some unclear language in the MOU about an Essex municipal area, something that isn't clear to me. So in my opinion, the money that came in, which now still sits in a fund and there's a current total, excuse me, a current total of in a fund that started with that first $25,000 amount. So now the senior center will be no longer, there won't be a senior center in the city of Essex Junction slash Village of Essex Junction. There won't be a senior van. And even though there is this bus conversation, I think it's not clear to many seniors that that does not mean a different service coming to your door. I don't think there's a clear understanding amongst the seniors that they have to find their way to the locations that they can get onto the vehicles. So I think that alone is not being fully understood by all of the seniors, case in point by the public to be heard statement before. The confusion I have is that in, I don't even know, like 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, around there-ish, there was this huge passion for seniors. There were huge events at Essex Junction Recreation and Parks at 75 Maple Street. There were golf carts driving seniors from the senior van to the luncheon tables. It was a, it was a senior love affair. So much so that I was thrilled. I thought, yes, this is, this is my community. This is where I'm at. I want to look after seniors like this. That rec love affair for seniors seems to have done a very interesting trajectory. It's interesting to me that on July 1st, 2016, when that $25,000 from the seniors came in, was a simultaneous time of meetings about the rec merger thing that the Village of Essex Junction Recreation Department wanted to do. So those two things happened at the same time. That's interesting to me. And then the, the love affair of the seniors is out the window. And I guess where I'm confused is, honestly, I don't think any one of you currently sitting at this table and anyone that was sitting at this table between 2016 and now would ever of your own accord have thought to yourself, let's remove that senior van. I, I really can't imagine a space where any one of you would have suggested that. And so here we are, no senior van, no senior center, vague, vague programming to be had. Don't worry, we'll get you a folding chair. I'm almost done. And.
We can't hear you. Just a minute. Sorry. We can't hear you. Sorry. I thought you could hear it. Now go. Sorry. Thank you.
Please forgive me, Raj. Please forgive me. Yes, but I was stuck in a space, I was stuck in a space that you were clearly not in, and I apologize for that misunderstanding of your, of your hand.
Sorry. I didn't mean it. It was.
I was a little, no, you were not rude. I was a little tense that you were gonna shut me off already, so I appreciate the time and I'm glad for this moment of candor between us. Thank you.
But we do, I will say just another couple minutes. Thanks.
Coming back now. Thanks. So my suggestion is that due to the lack of clarity and due to the confusion and due to the fact that it looks to me as though the senior center concept is not gonna be as, as big a deal. It can't be really, you know, there, there won't be as many seniors able to come, et cetera, et cetera. My suggestion is that that $18,000 go to either back to the seniors or to the place continuing the van services to see if our village, city people can, can utilize it. Those, those are all my comments about the senior van except for two quick remarks. One is that Elaine, with great respect, during your run for this.
Please, please direct your comments, please direct your comments to the chair. Thank you.
Raj, during, during Elaine's run, it was very, it was very important to her that our senior center is so important and that the new budget is investing more in senior programming. And when someone commented, this is why the Essex Senior Bus is so important for City of Essex Junction to be continued after December 31st, 2023, Elaine agreed. So I'm just pushing my luck here and I know I'm being really bold, but I ask you to reconsider that. And then.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Great. I think there's, the senior bus should continue. I think there should be an article on the next ballot that states, please let me finish my statement. The statement of the article is, shall the city of Essex Junction create a recreational advisory board for oversight of Essex Junction Recreation and Parks, namely, City of Essex Junction Recreation and Parks Recreational Advisory Board, RAB, is an advisory group to the City of Essex Junction City Council on a variety of recreation-related issues. The RAB recommends policies regarding strategies on acquisition, protection, maintenance, recreation programs, recreation camps, childcare, preschool, and enhancement of parks as well as support with interpretation and communication of the policies and functions of the Essex Junction Recreation and Parks Department. It would be a term of office of three years per member with membership appointment of the Recreation Advisory Board who oversees Essex Junction Recreation and Parks, consisting of seven members, all appointed by the City of Essex Junction City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. If, not gonna get into a discussion about this, but I feel like it was stated a couple of times during that, that the Essex Senior Center was closing and there wouldn't be room for anyone. I don't think anybody said that the Essex Senior Center is closing, or that there wouldn't be room for anyone. The Essex Senior Center, as a physical space, will have to be relocated, as will everybody in this building, for a period of time for the building to be renovated. They'll be welcomed back, as stated by Brad Luck in the meeting the other day, and probably in the first meeting as well.
It is absolutely.
I'm sorry you're interrupting me. And the public to be heard section is over. Thank you very much. That the seniors will be welcomed back, likely the space renovated and cleaned up, and it would have to be shared. And I will mention that all of the other entities around the state that I've been able to find, about a dozen of them, who have senior centers also share, and by the way, also rent and charge, like South Burlington and others, for the space to be used when not being used by the seniors. The senior center space will be prioritized for seniors in the current thinking. And as soon as we have more information on timing, which is an issue, which we're trying to work on based on contractor availability in the project for the building, we will communicate that. We will also communicate in a better way about how the transportation will work. And we'll have more info on that soon. So thank you for everybody for the comments and we will move on.
Can I just add?
Sure. Absolutely.
One clarification. So the programming that happens, the games, those will also be supported during, after January 1 and during the renovation.
Right.
It just is a matter of where that will take place in those time periods.
And is it fair to say that will happen in the city?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great.
Raj, Risa has her hand up. She's had it up for a little while for the public.
Apologize, Risa. I didn't see it.
Thank, excuse me, thank you. I have a quick comment, really. I was surprised at the meeting with the seniors that our interim building manager wasn't there. I think that that may have helped people understand what's gonna happen with all of the supplies and furniture and everything else. Because obviously, it's all gonna be going somewhere, and I would imagine that the interim building manager has to be involved in all of this stuff, not only where things are, but where things are going and how they come back. So that surprised me. Thank you.
Sure. I think also, at least in the recording provided by a third party, Brad, I think at least once said that those items would be moved to the appropriate locations by the city and returned to the senior center when the seniors returned after the renovation. So I appreciate the comment, but I just wanted to clarify. All of that will be finding its way to the appropriate locations with the folks that will be using them. So thanks. Anybody else? No? Not missing anyone else here? All right. We can move on to 5A Clerk Department update. Susan McAmara-Hill.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. Thanks for inviting me.
Thanks for coming.
So I put a lot of things in the memo, so I basically here to hear questions that you might have. But it's kind of, we're in a unique situation. We've, some of the departments have been here all along, like planning and zoning, and we had a finance department here before, but we've never had a municipal full-service clerk's office in this building before. So that's brand new.
I, I did read the memo. How's it going?
It's going pretty well. You know, there's a few kinks and growing pains, but we're getting there. Yeah.
I, I'm gonna just ask for a reminder because you brought up the primary in March, and my recollection is, those don't, those ballots aren't mailed. Is that correct? We're not, those ballots are not mailed?
They are not mailed. Only on request. I mean, we'll mail them if people request them, but they're not automatically mailed.
All right. So we may have some folks that have gotten used to that, so we'll have to remind everybody to request the mailing if they want.
Yeah, put something out on front porch for a minute.
I believe we are.
And not mailing.
There is a good reason for that.
Yeah.
Which is the other reason to bring it up.
The reason you can't just blanket mail the ballots is the voter has to state what party primary they want to vote in. So if they request the ballot, tell us what party to send, then we'll send it out to them, but it can't be sent automatically.
Also, have any questions?
It is really nice to have all of you back in the city hall.
Yeah, thanks.
Do your business right here. It's really, very glad you're back.
Thank you. Happy to be back in my old office. For until the renovations, anyway. Yeah.
Now is our new assistant clerk working out?
He's working out really well. He's, he picks up things quickly and is doing a lot of, a lot of the work routinely. I haven't shown him everything to be done with the clerk's office, but that's coming.
Does he have separate responsibilities from you, or do you both share all the same responsibilities?
Right now, we're pretty much sharing most of the responsibilities. He, he should be able to do whatever the clerk can do. So, yeah. He's doing more of the, like, tallying out at night and cashing out at night and that sort of thing, so.
The support are you giving to the town at this time? I, I know that through the transition in the last few months, you've said you report that you've had to do some work that you couldn't do here, but I'm wondering if you're still supporting the town in any way?
Yeah, I was, or giving them some support directly, not as part of my job here. But they are gonna be taking that part over on their own. So I'll probably be doing a little bit of training of what I was doing for them, which is basically back or uploading documents on to their digital index. So the new clerk wants to take that on herself, so that's great.
Nonetheless, thank you for the report.
Oh, yeah.
Spoken happy back.
Susan runs a smooth ship.
Yeah, that's for sure.
No worries.
All right.
And there's also flowers a lot of the time.
That's good to know.
Yes. Keep the counter supplied in the little lollipops and the dog biscuits.
And the dog bags.
Yes, the dog bags.
I'm, I'm glad to see the training is happening and that you're taking advantage of that. As a department. I think that's great. I, I just don't have many other questions for you because this was really.
Okay. All right.
So glad to have you back. Interested to hear how it, what the planning is for the, once we know more about the renovation and how that's gonna work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that with the number of people that came in person to vote for the last time we had a presidential primary. Kind of nervous about how that's gonna work with the moving out with the renovation timing. It's a busy election year, 2024, so just something to keep in mind.
Yep. Sure.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
5B, Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation update.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me come and speak with you. I'll try and be succinct and brief. My name is Sam Anderson. I'm the Executive Vice President of GBIC, the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation. Pardon me. We are one of 12 RDCs, Regional Development Corporations that exists throughout the state of Vermont. And our region, we have one, is all of Chitting County. The history of GBIC, we started, we were one of the first two RDCs. I'm not gonna go through every decade, but we were formed in 1954. And we built the first building in Essex Junction for IBM, for which we are very proud. Following that, GBIC built seven industrial parks. We work constantly with your largest employer as well as others, global foundries. Given that it represents a little over 2,200 employees and contractors and 5,300 indirect jobs, the state economist has said global foundries alone represents 1.6% of the state's gross domestic product in 2022. They continue to do well as opposed to any potential rumors you hear. They just received, as you may know, $35 million in a federal grant for their GAN, capital G, small a, capital N, production of microchips. We do a lot of confidential work with them constantly. With all the businesses in Essex Junction and beyond, we connect business to state programs. We take business concerns in the aggregate to the state legislature, the administration, and the US delegation. Since COVID and the flood, we were asked by the state to expand the kind of businesses we work with. We have traditionally worked with dollar importing, value-added, good wage-paying jobs. We were asked to expand into commercial, everything from sole proprietor on up to a global foundries. And assist those businesses and then keep them informed on federal and state grants that have been available since 2020, such as the CRRP, Community Recovery and Revitalization Program, and the BGAP Program. I'm proud to say the RDCs on Monday launched our SBTAE. We love acronyms. That means Small Business Technical Assistance Exchange Program. And that is set up to grant $4,000 grants, up to $4,000 grants for businesses that need technical assistance, not equipment. Needless to say, in 48 hours, we were oversubscribed on this program. We will return to the state legislature to help tell them we need more money. There have been over 100. There have been over 188 applicants alone from Chitting County. We are the most oversubscribed region in the area. We do help not only Essex Junction businesses, the businesses throughout Chitting County. And I'd like to point out that that helps some of your residents who may not work in an Essex Junction business, but do work in a business in another municipality, like Burlington, South Burlington, Colchester, Milton. So we feel we have a long reach and we're proud of the work we've done. We are confidential and we don't charge business for our assistance. In the past, before you became your own city, congratulations, Essex Junction, the village and the town, last year sent from a joint town and junction account, a check as a contribution to GBIC for the amount of $7,500. We do receive contributions from 95% of the municipalities. Not really knowing how to deal with this year's contribution, I gently sent a letter to Regina for your attention with a request for $3,750. I sent the same request to the town of Essex. I spoke on the phone with both Regina and, wow, thank you Regina, and with the town manager Greg. We are deeply appreciative of any support you give us. We included in attached to this letter, Regina, I don't know if you have it, our performance dashboard for FY 20, there you go, 2023. This is a summary of year end from 7/1/22 to 6/30/23 of what's gone on, what we've been involved with, what we've done. We're a staff of three with a fantastic board of directors. And to let you know, our current chair is Essex Junction, I hope, resident? I'm not sure, but I know he works there, Tim Haye, from.
In the week.
The fairgrounds. Pardon me?
He's, Sam, he's in the room, just so you know.
Oh, yay, Tim. Hi. We're very proud of this dashboard and what we've accomplished and the assistance we've given. Essex Junction is an important municipality to Chitting County, both in businesses and in your cultural assets. So I humbly request that you consider the letter I sent, and I look forward to hearing from you. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I could go on for half an hour, but seeing, but seeing your agenda, I don't want to do that to you because you'd probably say, oh, give her $1.50 and get her out of here. But there is so much we're doing. Our West Central SEDS just got approved, and we're now applying to become an economic development district, which will hopefully put us in prime position for more EDA, federal EDA grants that will involve infrastructure, which I know is important to your municipality and all the municipalities here. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for the board?
Oh, by the way, I thank you for letting me participate by Zoom. I'm about to have the replacement surgery and getting around is not in my wheelhouse. So I make it into work and out of work, and that's it. So I greatly appreciate you letting me participate by Zoom.
We wish you luck with the upcoming event.
Oh, thanks.
Two thumbs up. I think it'll be, it'll be great. So.
I do have a question for you, Sam.
Sure.
This is Elaine Haney. I'm.
Hi.
Hi. Outside of Global Foundries and outside of any Essex Junction businesses that may have received one of those $4,000 grants, can you give some examples of some businesses that you have assisted in Essex Junction?
I can only refer you because we deal confidential with business. I, I apologize, but I refer you to the Agency of Commerce and Community Development's website. And on that, you will see a list of those businesses that received grants. That doesn't represent all the businesses we worked with because some we worked with did not receive a grant, but it will give you a sense of who did. And I, I'm sorry, without permission by the company, I don't speak on their behalf.
I appreciate that. Thank you. This has been a different question then. Can you, can you give us an idea of the average number of employees of the businesses that you, what size businesses do you help in Essex Junction outside of Global Foundries?
Okay. Since 2020, we have also, we, we, our bread and butter was always high-tech, value-added manufacturing businesses. Since 2020, and the federal ARPA dollars that came down in the form of several grant programs, we've worked with restaurants, beauty salons, bars, any business that met the criteria of the grant, we would help.
Thank you.
So from 1 to 2,220 employees and the gambit in the last several years. And it's been really wonderful to work with them.
Thank you.
So as a, can you tell me then, if Essex Junction did not provide the requested amount that you're asking for, would Essex Junction businesses still be eligible to receive the services that you provide?
Absolutely yes. Whether you give us a contribution or not, our mission is to help all the businesses that we work with throughout Chitting County. And it would not impact the work we would continue to do with Essex Junction businesses. It would sadden us because it would say possibly that you're not supportive of our economic development endeavors, for which I'd be sorry. But we will continue to work with all businesses that request our assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sam, this is Raj. I appreciate you coming today. I guess my only comment is.
I can't see you.
Sorry. I, I, my only comment, request, what's really a comment and kind of a request is the GBIC makes some efforts to diversify its board. I think if we're going to, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty self-explanatory. I think it's a great board. It's a great group of people. I think it's becoming less representative. I'd like to see GBIC make some efforts into reaching out to organizations like the People of Color Network and others to find other folks doing the same work that could contribute in new and different ways. I, I see the same people on just about every board in Vermont, especially Chitting County. It's the same list. And I think if we're going to keep contributing, I personally would want to see some improvements there and some changes, some efforts made at least to, to, to that end. So it's appreciating everything you're doing, for sure. But I, for me, for next year, I'd want to hear more about concrete efforts that went into doing that before I approved of the request.
That's an interesting comment. Thank you, Raj. We do have a number of women on our board and younger folks. When it comes to board members, we do lean heavily on those involved directly with business. People, organizations like the POC, we work with in other ways. For example, the Small Business Technical Assistance Exchange. It's clear on our website, if you go to the RDCs of Vermont, that priority is being given to, and let me just read you the list, that the priority is being given to people of color, veterans, immigrants, women. And they are LGBTQ plus identifying business owners, justice-involved individuals, new Americans, and those in rural areas. We are prioritizing BIPOC women, young Vermonters, mature Vermonters. And we do work with these organizations. And our grant program is directly prioritizing those groups.
That's great. Let's see them on the board then.
I'll take that back to the board.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming. Is anyone, Amber, I can't see you. Do you have any questions for Sam?
Elaine actually got the one that I was going to ask, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, if there's nothing else, we're going to open this up to any public comment from anyone that might have one. So Sam, if you can just bear with us for just a minute. Is there anyone in the room that has a question on this item or anyone online? I just got to switch over to Zoom to see if there's any hands raised. Annie Cooper.
Yes, please. Raj, I'd like to thank Sam Anderson for her presentation and for her dedication to work and community. And my apologies, Sam, for how you were spoken to.
Okay. That was interesting. Great. Any other comments? All right, Sam, I can't see you now, but I trust you're still there.
I am. I'm right here.
Great. Thank you very much again for joining us this year. Thanks for the work.
Thank you, Raj.
And look forward to seeing you next year and seeing the work the organization does.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 5D discussion and consideration of Vermont. Oh, yep, nope. 5C Town Meeting TV FY25 budget presentation.
Hello, everyone.
Hi there.
Nice to see you all. So yes, I'm here to talk about both item C and a little bit on item D, but I'll start with item C. So thank you for having me. My name's Jordan Mitchell, Director of Operations for Town Meeting TV, and I'm here to present what is our fiscal year '24, your fiscal year '25 budget, and give a little bit of an overview of the last fiscal year. So last year, Town Meeting TV produced and supported 1,386 programs for our member communities. And 362 of these programs was municipal coverage across Chitting County. For Essex Junction, we produced 34 city council, planning commission, and DRB meetings. Some other meeting coverage we had in there was the Board of Civil Authority, the public hearing on charter amendments, and an informational hearing. So generally, our contract stipulates production of three meetings a month, or 36 meetings a year, in one general program per month. In the last year, we covered 94% of the budgeted number of programs, doing 34 out of 36 expected meetings. Since we fell a little bit out of that 100%, we want to encourage you to, you know, get the most out of this. So as things come up, as meetings get canceled, but maybe there's other things you want covered, you know, we would encourage you to reach out to me. You have my email address and see if we can have other things covered, as well as if there's any public events happening in the community that you think would be interesting, you know, please feel free to reach out. So Town Meeting TV is funded in large part by cable subscribers of Comcast and Burlington Telecom. And then municipal contributions help to cover other operating costs. This year, we are requesting an FY25 Essex Junction municipal contribution of $13,891 for general operating funds. This is a 5% increase from last year's contribution. You can see past funding history and projections on packet page eight, which is our page two. Lastly, on this item, I'd like to thank our field producer Bella, who's in the corner, and also Amber, who is the Town Meeting TV trustee for Essex Junction, for their continued dedication to municipal coverage and community media. So any questions on this first part?
Anyone?
Like to, if nothing else, I'd like.
Sure.
Observation. I've made this comment more about our own meetings, but I observe this with other municipalities. I have a concern over the consistency of audio, especially because of the fact that whether it's me getting older or observing others who are struggling with hearing, being able to consistently hear all the speakers, those that are in the public hearing, council or other select boards, the audio quality is inconsistent. I think we've gotten much better with it right now, right now. But it is one of my concerns moving forward that we can conduct business and then people can hear it and understand it. So again, they can feel like they're anticipating, whether it's just in observation or, you know, again, being able to verbalize for themselves. So that's the comment I wanted to make about quality of service. But I really do appreciate what Town Meeting TV does, not just for our municipality, but for others as well. So it's obviously, from what I hear from others, as well as my own experience, it's a key part of what makes us feel like a community, to be able to have this type of resource. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to thank you for those comments, Marcus. I couldn't agree more. Yes, with the sound, but also with the essential nature of CCTV. We could not, could not do what we do without CCTV and Town Meeting Television making it accessible to people who can't come to these meetings. So thank you for that. Just full disclosure, I'm the Chair of CCTV Productions, which is the other arm of, well, CCTV is so hard to describe. But Town Meeting Television is a separate group and board in CCTV. And I used to be on the trustee board of Town Meeting Television. Now it's CCTV. And Amber is on Town Meeting Television representing Essex Junction. But I wanted to just point out, I'm really proud of CCTV right now because they are embarking on multiple conversations that are important to our community, including a discussion on free speech and how we are, our role in free speech in the community, as well as working on equity assessments of all of our policies and procedures and our programming. So we're just trying to stay on the cutting edge of what needs to be done to make sure that Town Meeting Television and CCTV Productions are doing the work of the community and representing the community as well as we possibly can. So, and Jordan's a huge part of that, and so is Bella over in there in the. I'm very grateful to Town Meeting Television and CCTV. I'm very grateful to Town Meeting Television and CCTV.
Amber? Anything? No.
I would like to add one last thing and simply say that again, and I made this comment once before, I would like to see us utilize, whether we're using Town Meeting TV or not, I think all of our commissions, committees should have the opportunity that we have as a council in order to have the discussion public and put that out there. So I don't believe that for discussion this evening, but in the future, we should discuss how we can, how we can do that so that Spike Walk, Planning, DRB, and the Council all have utilized this kind of thing.
Yeah, we'll have that discussion during the budget.
Yeah. Opportunity for us to perhaps, or I'll record it, but so I read about that in here, which I didn't realize before. Just echoing everything else everybody's, I don't know how, especially over the last few years, we would have had for it. But I do think it's essential. It's probably one of the best values of what's provided. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I've been talking with the Planning Commission, and we are gonna start regularly covering that as well. I know we used to kind of cover one or the other, the DRB or Planning Commission. So starting now, like our fiscal year now, we're gonna start covering that regularly. And yeah, as there's other meetings, if it's maybe you have one specific meeting that's more important, or, you know, maybe you want it regularly, like we can talk about that as well, and we're happy to do that. Anything else on, on this? Thank you.
Are you gonna move on to the Net of Van?
That's your call.
I wanna make sure I understand the delineation here, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so on, this is one separate agenda item, so I'll open it up to public comment for this portion of it, which is strictly about Town Meeting TV. Is there anyone in the room that has a comment on this? No, anyone going to Zoom? Never had this open. Anyone else on Zoom? Annie Cooper.
Ah, yes, thanks. Huge fan of Town Meeting TV. Thanks for all you do. Back when I was Chair of the EDC, we would record ourselves, and then between Megan O'Rourke and myself, we got it listed on the channel, and we started, we started that precedent. And I'm sure that it will be cost-effective if you do it that way, and more professional for planning commission meetings the way, and yeah, it's just great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discussion and consideration of Vermont Access Network funding conversation. Jordan, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Regina, I apologize. Sorry, backing up.
Amber has her hand raised.
Amber, you know, you have to just.
I don't wanna interrupt.
Just jump in.
So I'm just gonna recuse myself from this discussion due to a conflict of interest, and just wanted to point that out to folks. I'm gonna turn off my camera, and I'll come back after this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Forgot about that part. That was my bad.
All's good. All right. So secondly, we have an exciting update from the legislator that we're looking for your support to help get over the finish line. So CCTV, the parent organization of Town Meeting TV, is part of a statewide organization known as the Vermont Access Network, or VAN. And we've been working the last several years to find a stable and permanent funding source for community media centers across the state. We've been successful in receiving a one-time bridge funding for the last few years while we did some other research. And now we're ready to bring a proposal for a permanent solution to the legislature. So to show support for their request, we're asking for organizations and municipalities to sign onto a letter of support. And then we will later share this letter with the legislators in their 2024 session. This is attached in tonight's packet on pages 18 through 20. And I've also shared this with Ashley, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And to summarize kind of what the bill is, is it would establish a new community media public benefit fund, funded by communication service providers in the state to help keep support, financial support for PEG or Public Education Government Access Centers, such as Town Meeting TV and CCTV, to continue operating. This is also a little bit related to how every year we ask you for a little bit more money. This would, you know, ideally be having us ask less from other people as we'd be getting more funding through this bill. Any questions on this?
I'm curious when, when you would need this letter of support from us.
That's a great question. I do not have a specific deadline. It's kind of ongoing. I don't think super urgent if you need more time to consider it, but I think somewhat soon. I will let you know if there's a certain deadline.
Okay. But do you fully expect this to come up this session?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Amber, sorry. Jordan, do you want to explain for the audience what, what it entails, the poll attachment, and how that funding would come about?
Sort of, yes.
Pretend like you're just talking to me.
Yeah, let's more so, it's something I'm also starting, you know, still trying to understand myself. So currently, public access centers such as Town Meeting TV are funded through cable subscriptions, through the poll tax, like the physical lines on the cable polls. And as I'm sure you all know, cable revenue is declining. People are no longer subscribing to cable. They're moving to streaming services and other things like that. So the idea with this bill is that we would be getting funding through other public means right of way, public means of ways through, like, you know, other lines, I think such as internet.
Fiber?
Yeah, fiber and things like that, since we do, you know, we stream on YouTube and, and other, other ways that we're accessed. So trying to get away just from cable and looking for funding sources elsewhere.
Okay. I'm just kind of scrolling through here.
This has been a many-year work in progress with all of the public access stations across Vermont, working together to figure out how to supplement the cost of their services when cable subscriptions are plummeting. And so therefore, the contributions from cable companies are going down as well. This is a really innovative way to try to address that gap.
I know for me, it's gonna take some time to digest and sort of, I think we'll probably have to talk about it again. I'm not sure quite yet what questions I have. Still trying to get my head around how it'll work. I think I generally agree in the sense that we need to keep CCTV and Town Meeting TV funded. That's just fine.
It might be helpful if I may just suggest a, a talking points or a template of some kind for a letter of support so that we understand what we're supposed to be saying.
Yeah.
That would be really helpful, that we can edit as, is appropriate for Essex Junction.
Sure. There is, I guess it's not in the packet. There is a, I believe I emailed it to Ashley initially. There is a template of what to sign in. So I will get that back, make sure that gets back to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any, I don't have any questions if nobody else does. If you can just hang on with us for one second. I'll see if anybody in the room has any questions on this topic or comments. Or anyone on Zoom? Can you see Zoom now? No, it doesn't look like it. Great. Thank you, Jordan, for joining us.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, true.
Five E, discussion and consideration of Champlain Valley Expo Sound and Demnification Agreement.
Amber's got her hand up.
Oh, Amber.
Sorry, I was just gonna be clear about my conflict of interest, just to address the comment. My, I am not recusing myself due to my role on the board. I'm recusing myself due to the fact that I represent Burlington Telecom, which is a contributor of the poll attachment money and PEG funding.
Great. Thanks. Reminder to folks in the Zoom land, we are not monitoring the chat. The chat is not a method of communication during the meeting. Generally, it's not recorded for the minutes. All right, Tim, welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. Tim Shea, Executive Director of the Champlain Valley Exposition. I'm joined with Dave Wexler, who is the engineer, who you folks hire, who's there monitoring the sound and can speak to decibel levels and technical issues much more articulate than I. But I believe a memo in your packet there with a request to extend the, or renew, I should say, the agreement for the sound ordinance and to align it with the financial agreement that this body approved last year. And I believe that was, it was a request from the city, just from more administrative perspective, just to align the two agreements. But the sound agreement, other than extending it out, there have not been any changes to the document that I'm aware of.
Okay. Regina, did you want to say anything about this at all, or?
Just to say that the other changes to the agreement are village to
Yes.
in the draft that you got.
Okay. Well, any counselors have any questions or comments on this?
I just have a very quick question first. Well, you just referred to an agreement that happened last year. What was that?
That?
Financial agreement that the pilot, that explains the contribution from CBE to the City of Essex Junction. Started as 15,000, but it increases a little bit each year. And is that tied to the sound agreement in any way? It said, when you described it, it sounded like they might be related.
I can speak to that. No, they're, they're two separate documents, but I think the intent of the council was to, from an administrative perspective, have them renew at the same time. Because like every other year, is Tim back for the sound, or is he back for the financial piece here?
We just like when you come back.
Was that?
We just like when you
Okay, and I'm more than happy to come. But I think the idea was to not merge them, but have them renew at the same time.
Thanks. That was, I wasn't here last year, so I wasn't quite sure what you were talking about. Thank you.
Amber, I can't see you. Do you have anything you want to bring up on this? Not to single you out, but.
Yeah, I, I have a comment and a question, and I apologize, I missed the name of the guy from the testing.
David Wexler.
David, okay. So I did want to just point out to the folks that are listening at home, watching this, that one of the things that we asked to be done is for there to be reports that Mr. Wexler does to be posted on the city's website so that everyone can see those. Those are on the city website now, so you can go see all of those reports, including the waiver and this agreement that we're talking about. Question for David is that I did notice that the reports seem to be, there's a lag in the dates of when we get those reports. And I'm hoping that we can try to get those a little bit sooner rather than later, so we're not looking at something that happened two months, two months ago.
Understood. I apologize for that. You know, I had some medical issues over the summer, so it was a little lagging there and getting the reports done. But typically, I've done the, gotten the reports in the past to, to, prior to Chris, to Robin Pierce, and a couple of weeks after each event. That was typically what I was doing. Had some issues this year, though.
Totally appreciate that and understand. And you are monitoring, though, the date of the event. And so just so everyone else understands this is, if, if there is an event that exceeds the threshold, that is instantaneous. It's not, the reports are just the data going down to paper.
Correct. Yeah. I'm actually coordinate with, I will talk to the sound people. If I notice that the noise levels, the sound levels are approaching the limits, I will notify them. And so that they can take appropriate measures to lower the, lower the, the sound levels, keep them within the limits. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Don't, please don't go. You're stuck now. I, I, I've approved this in the past, but I do have a number of, I've always had a number of questions about it, so I'm gonna take this opportunity. So this testing goes in five-minute periods, right?
Five-second intervals.
Sorry. We're averaging them over a five-minute period for?
Oh, oh, for, for the, for the maximum sound level. That was what was agreed.
To, yeah, so not being around back then, I don't know how this is, probably 10 years at least.
Uh, actually, I'm the only survivor of that crew. The first event I did was the Elton John event, so.
And that was a great, anyway.
Absolutely.
Sounded amazing.
Although he was the only one who exceeded the noise levels at the time.
Why it sounded so good in my name.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering why we're doing five-minute averages. So if you have, and, and here's my probably ridiculous logic. You have a song that's repeatedly hitting notes that are violating the sound, and it's a four-minute song, but those notes only happen instantaneously and don't contribute to a spike every five seconds, then this could be seriously impacting someone repeatedly over the whole course of a concert and not hitting a violation. I guess I'm just trying to understand how that.
My understanding, my recollection from, we're talking winter 2008 now, was that sometimes songs exceed the, the, the 78 decibel hourly average threshold. And they wanted to create some sort of instantaneous method to capture, all right, well, you can be above the sound level, the average level, for a certain period of time within that hour, but you still have to maintain the hourly average. And I, I believe this was a conversation between the Fairgrounds folks and the, the Village folks. Dave Crawford, I believe, was the Village manager at the time. From a technical standpoint, it's, you know, from my perspective, you know, as long as they're within the 78 hourly average. I mean, I think this was a, was an opportunity to give the venue, you know, songs will go exceed the, the hourly average, but it gives them an opportunity to still play the songs and have the music at that level. I was not involved in conversations. I was there as far as only providing some technical assistance. I was not involved with creating the noise limits.
Yeah, because I guess I'm, I was trying to pull up one of those reports. I didn't bring it with me, but I, I think for me, it's just difficult to understand, and now that, understanding it's been since 2008, I have a number of other questions, but that just sort of cemented it for me. I think for me, I think I'm okay with doing this agreement. I realized that we asked last year to line, we said it might be a good idea to line them up, but I feel like it might be time to kind of look at this again, and that's just my opinion, since it's been 15 years. Because every time I read this, every, every time I've, it's only this, the second time I think I renewed it, I remember how much I don't understand it and how difficult it is to get my head around. And, and if I can't, then I can't explain it. And and again, the intention here is not to figure out how we can, because I went through some exercises and looked at other reports and trying to figure out, okay, so what is this telling me? Like, what are these averages? What are these timeframes?
Okay.
What do these number of timeframes have to meet in order to now and all this stuff? And, you know, it's not so much trying to get a find out of CBE at all. It's the way this is set up, are people still being impacted, or have we achieved that? And I, I don't know. I mean, and we achieved a great balance of really letting the shows happen, which is a desired outcome.
Right.
And, you know, mitigating the, the noise and, and, you know, I, just rambling here a little bit, but, you know, I'm just looking through this list of questions, and it just keeps coming back to, it's just really hard to understand this. It's a little convoluted as a topic, you know, trying to figure out how to do this.
If I may, one comment on, on sound levels. One person may be impacted by a cer, same decibel, you know, it, it, it's very subjective as far as how much of a nuisance it is to a person, depending on the song. There were no complaints for Elton John. Everybody loved the event. But I was there for one of the concerts a couple summers ago, and it was loud, but it was within limits. And there was a neighbor there being very irate, because, but it was music he was And there was a neighbor there being very irate, because, but it was music he wasn't, you know, did not like. So I I guess that's why the the limits were established to kind of create a boundary level. All right, you cannot exceed this, um, as far as the, uh, exceeding exceedance, um, the five minute hourly or the five minute window where they're, they can exceed the hourly average. That's an, I guess, another, I would say, almost arbitrary definition. I mean, there's nothing really in, you know, state law around this and there's.
Sure.
Yeah, so these numbers are kind of were picked arbitrary based on, and one thing we could do, and I'm not trying to generate more work for myself, but, um, is look at the actual data of over the last five, ten years and, you know, I could report to you. Here are the numbers base of like concerts during events not outside of the fair. And here are the numbers based on what you are getting at the during the fair. I really, my, from my experience, the most of the impacts are for this concerts that are not during the fair.
Sure, yes, I mean.
I'd love to see that data.
It may take me a while.
Volunteer to do some more work for yourself, but that would be very important historical data.
That would be, uh, something to look at. I mean, because I know some of the concerts have gotten loud, but none of has have exceed, because the cooperation that we have between the Fairgrounds and and myself and the, uh, the, um, musicians, they we they tend to work with us, you know, hey, these numbers are getting high, lower, you know, lower the, lower the volume. And they've always, you know, done that. They've been working with, and I try to keep it below, you know, significantly, not, you know, significantly below the hourly average.
That that's, thank you for sharing that part about the musicians, because that's where my question is. I think I was around when that first agreement was signed. I'm not remembering, maybe it was the second time we extended it. But the arbitrariness of seventy eight. And my question is, do the artists come to the expo saying, this is how loud we are? Or are they just looking to see if Essex Junction has a limit and they're going to just hit that limit?
Honestly, I would not know that. It, that would be more of a, you know, something Tim could speak to.
Tim, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah.
You can pull a second chair up. It's okay if you're both at the table.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, um, as far, so when we contract with an artist, we send with them with a sound agreement and sound waiver, so they know the type of venue they're coming into. And David said, um, you know, we have somebody who advances the band with them and they're very clear. Here's the expectations of, you know, the venue, et cetera, et cetera. And they are, for the most part, very responsive. Again, how, you know, a concert in the grandstand, David has his points along the, um, bound our property lines there. He's kind of walking back and forth, all kind of thumbs up type of thing and constant contact with David to make sure we're not bumping up against it, but we're comfortably within it there.
So so conceivably, we could set seventy five, seventy two, and that would be part of the agreement that you send to the band.
There does have a threshold where they won't come, and I don't have that number there.
Yeah.
Because, um, um, the artists have a show they want to put on as well. The people buying a ticket have expectations what that show is. So it comes to a point where they just would not come. I mean, bands choose to come here, we don't pick the band.
Oh, sure. No, I understand that, but I'm curious what the difference is, it, you know, for each decibel lower.
Yeah.
Like, what is the threshold?
Yeah.
And do we have some room there?
Yeah.
And then also curious, you had said, Dave, that the issues that we've experienced have been with concerts that were not during the fair. And so that says to me that you're dealing with different companies, so you're dealing with the fair during the fair. And you're dealing with like higher ground during.
You're dealing with us.
Yeah, I'm dealing with the Fairgrounds. I guess I should clarify, the fair generates a background level of noise, you know, which is like seventy decibels. Um, I monitor by the green gate, which is on the east side of the property, just below the green gate. There used to, it used to be back where the Ferris wheel was, and it was just super loud, you know, so the fair generates a seventy decibel background. The grandstand has a hard time because of the way the 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 speakers are are projecting, has a hard time hitting that that boundary with the same amount of force. And you'll you'll see a bump up in the sound level, um, on the east side of the property during an event, but not significantly. It's because there's a lot of background noise, where in the summertime events, the concerts, that's the only sound. And it kind of amplifies it.
And is it also because it's on the lawn and not in the bandstand?
And it's pointed in a different direction. So I, during the summertime events, I, um, the worst, the people on the west side of the property get it worse.
Yeah.
And, you know, I monitor, it's close to the property line while still maintaining direct line of sight of of the of the sound tower. So it's, you know, that's, and it it will travel a lot further, especially on a quiet night. I have, people know me for years have been doing this, they're like, they're like living over in Williston, they're like, oh, yeah, I could hear it clearly.
Well, it depends on the wind, too.
Exactly. Depends on the wind, how clear it is that night, things like that. So that all affects how far the sound travels. But I will say that, you know, the 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 events have come close, but never exceeded the limits, other than Elton John.
If I could add to a point that David made also, I mean, also, I can't stress enough, if folks like the music, no wishes at all.
No complaints.
Sure. No wish at all. But if they don't like it, boom, and it's, you can, you can call it out. It's just.
I I I do think that there's a, there's a, there's a, there is a group of people that just feel like there's no point in saying anything. So I do, I do feel like, yes, you are right.
Yeah.
And there's a for certain number of the population here that just kind of grin and bear it. And a lot of that probably goes subjectively across the across the act. But I think there's just sort of an understanding that this is just what happens. And I, and and any of this questioning, like you brought up decibel levels, I did look up, long story short, the issue higher grounds having in South Burlington. As a public health person, I was interested, oh, they're they're asking for WHO standards for sound. So I said, oh, well, we're going to do this. Let me look them up. And we are actually within that. So that was, you know, for reference, we are eighty three is three decibels over the recommended background, long term exposure to eighty of eighty, I believe, and not that much over. So I think I think we're within the limits. I think my personal, you know, it comes down, and this is more for Tim and the board, you know, when we get to the, um, administrative procedures, this has always been a curiosity for me, the three categories of, you know, there's the events during the fair. And then there's B, which doesn't have a number associated with it in terms of the number of events. And then there's C, which is another twenty, which I think we did around COVID because we're trying to backfill. You know, I think the whole thing being, I think my bottom line is the whole thing being fifteen years old and being rather convoluted, um, I'm sort of recommending that we do this for a year or two, a year, and spend that time trying to, is there a way to streamline this? Is there a way to improve it? Is there a way to take public comment? After all, like I said, it's been fifteen years. And and put a little time, not not blow it up, you know, um, but put some time into, um, what have we found? How is it working? But I just want to say, this is completely respecting, um, the benefits, uh, and the openness and the generosity of the Fairgrounds. I can't list everything, uh, CB does provide for the for the community, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, this isn't coming after CD, but I think, um, that's just my feeling. I'm curious what the rest of the board thinks. I've talked enough on this, I think. So anybody?
So I'll just, I'll just say that I I agree with you as far, I I'm okay with aligning these agreements from a timing standpoint. I did also do that cursory look up to to understand a little bit better the decimal levels impact on hearing, all of that, to try to understand that. I came to a similar understanding that I thought these numbers were close to where I I think we would probably agree. With my cursory au- audio knowledge, let me ask this question, though. In regard to, and we absolutely should be monitoring for this, but I'm curious about whether or not there's an opportunity for a proactive step from CBE to use the technology that's available to limit the sound that comes from those speakers at those concerts. No artist is going to want to put a limitation on their sound. So I'm sure they're not arriving with limiters. But CBE, I don't know if CB has considered it in order to help be proactive in managing the amount of sound coming from those shows. Anyway, so I'm just curious as to whether or not there's been discussion.
I will, I will say that, um, when they first started doing the concerts in the midway during non-fair events, the, um, the guy who was the program director, Tom, um, Tom Adi, was really cognizant of the way they aimed the speakers so that all the sound was trapped within those buildings. When they, uh, I've noticed that certain events, if the, um, some of the speakers have been pointed further up, you know, I'm going to get a worse noise out on the western property line. So working with the Fairgrounds and the musicians are having to aim the speakers properly, because essentially they're trapping all the sound with the the buildings that are out on the western property line will block all that sound, and it kept the sa- I've noticed over the last couple of years that the sound levels have increased on the western property line, not to the to the point where they're above the limit, but it has increased over the first, since they initially started doing it. I think it was, what, twenty fourteen was one of the first years they did those concerts. So that's one thing that kind of what you're, to your point, that they could do a better job of of aiming the sound.
Yeah. I guess I have those discussions certainly, you know, the, you know, that advanced work we do with the bands, those are the type of discussions we 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 have with them. But we can certainly, you know, have, you know, look into, are there lower decibel levels? What is that threshold that you're putting up there?
Because I know that there's mechanical ways to do it in order to try to control that relative level.
Yeah.
Overall. Again, I don't expect any artist to have that piece of equipment on hand because they're not going to want to do that.
Yeah.
But I I just wonder if CBE couldn't be proactive in the fact that these artists are coming here and just, you know, whether it's CB's own equipment or something else that, again, helps to limit that. The other thing is, from the standpoint of you're mentioning the the western side, so I don't know what conversations have been had, are you talking about any other potential physical mitigation on that western edge, potentially on the property that might help those particular neighbors if there's, if there's continuing to be worsening on that western side?
I wouldn't see it. I mean, the way it's currently configured with the buildings there, they they are sufficient to block, sufficiently block the majority of the sounds that when it's lea- the sound is leaving the property, it's, you know, a low enough decibel reading that it's really not impacting the the neighbors too too heavily.
Because the building's had a pretty good tree line as well before it hits houses on that western side.
And I do think there's a difference between hearing it and being disturbed by it, um, which again is that's subjective and it's where I'm on the other side of that western neighborhood.
Okay.
And I get it in the front of my house, which faces Burlington, because it bounces off my neighbor's house and comes back into the house, which is the weirdest thing. So it's like an echo, which, but you say it's gotten louder on that western boundary. I would say actually the past few years, our experience has been quieter from those, those lawn concerts. Just anecdotally, it's just we're just not hearing them the way we used to.
Where you could be used to it.
Or I could be used to it. I could be, I could be going, I know my left ear. I am eligible to use the senior center. So I'm going to join. And my left ear is what it used to be. So any other questions for on this topic? Sure.
I do have one or two other just questions.
Yeah.
We also sometimes hear from neighbors about intermittent loud noise. And this is not something that's just the expo. This is also really loud cars on West Street, um, random gunfire, dogs, you know, I think our noise ordinance and our LDC, like in general around noise, I think it's time for a conversation about all of that, because I think as a group, we all hear complaints a lot about sound, like a lot. And if we're thinking about revisiting this conversation on noise in gen- at the expo, might not be a bad idea to have this conversation with the community about noise in general. And, um, you know, because sometimes, I know that the contract has, like, the the monitoring is a twenty four hour window, right? So it's like the day of the event. Is that correct?
Not all day, it's just during the concert.
Okay.
So typically, like for a con, the only time I do overnight monitoring is the Relay for Life. And when they're actually out there or like the Wolf's Guard, uh, camping, like monitor, make sure they're.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm sorry.
A cancer survivor event. And we're, we monitor that because I. A relay, yeah, yeah, Relay for Life. Because they're there overnight.
Right, because so there's activity happening overnight, but it's like sudden, instantaneous, not expected during the concert. And and that's something that folks complain about, and I know it's im- almost impossible to regulate that kind of thing, because it has to be sustained so that a police officer can hear it and then issue a ticket. So I know that that's a sticking point for neighbors, and it's a sticking point with other noise that we experience in the city. And so I just wonder if it's time to have a conversation with the community and with EP Essex Police, like, you know, what does our sound ordinance look like in general going forward? And that's why I think you were talking about maybe not quite four years, but give us some, do it, do it for now, and then give us time to have a conversation.
Yeah, Ken? Ken, I'm sorry to call you out. Can, I I'm hearing you oddly with my left ear, which I just disclosed was not what it used to be. I'm so, I'm sorry, but if you could, I'm comfortable with one or two. I'd I'd like to to take an opportunity to kind of look at this again. And part of for for me is we're we're issuing waivers, we're we're doing things throughout this document. So that's my opinion. Andrew?
The only thing that I was going to mention, uh, with the agreement in general, is just the numbered list goes from one to three without a number two. It was the same thing in the last go around, which I think Amber mentioned the last time that we had this conversation, uh, it didn't get fixed at that point. So since you brought up about the possibility of not aligning, I would just recommend that if the desire is to not change or is to change the years, to just keep in mind that someone is going to have to do the research that's being asked, someone's going to have to prioritize this. We're about to conclude a strategic planning process that's probably going to give us the city more work than what it's going to know what to do with. And so is this the topic at this point in time that want, that should be prioritized in advance of seeing what the results are from the strategic plan? So there might be, uh, I would advocate just keep the timeframe to end when it's already scheduled to end. So that way there can just be that one conversation, CBE in twenty twenty seven-ish around what we want to see for the next few years. But I'm not going to be sitting at this table, so do what you.
Can I ask one more, certain more question in regard, because, uh, Elaine's comment brought up something that I'd seen from the constituent specifically about Wolf's Guard. For events like that or Relay for Life that does happen twenty four hours, is there expo staff on site help enforce or at least contain those particular events? Because obviously we have heard a number of complaints, you know, whether it's a car, whether it's fireworks, things of this nature. I'm wondering if expo staff is on site. Expo staff is on site during those events.
There, there is um, I'll talk about Wolf's Guard. It's Relay for Life is really not and it that that one manages itself quite well. The nature of the event, cancer survivors. Um, it's kind of pulls on your heartstrings quite a bit. So that is one that um. We haven't had any issues with. We monitor. I think it's kind of uh grandfathered why we monitor it because it happens to be an overnight. Uh, a event. Uh, Wolf's Guard, no, we do. We have staff and we also have a significant amount of security there as well. Um, Essex Police um are make trips to there um on uh overnight uh too. In fact, I think this year. Uh, one of the few infractions we had, or I say we had, it was not an event attendee. It was a local resident who was had a similar car who was kind of joining in on Pearl Street and got received a ticket. Uh, it was not an event attendee. Uh, but no, we do have adequate staff. There's significant staff on Wolf's Guard overnight because the. The nature of the of the group.
I have no problem with Relay for Life. I just brought it in because they're all twenty four hours.
Thoughts Regina, Chris on what Andrew said?
Um, I would uh wholeheartedly agree with what Andrew said. And the other thing I would just add to that is that this is not an easy. Thing to do differently and or better necessarily. Um, I think we can one hundred percent get a document that's more easy to understand from the beginning to the end and what we're intending to do with it. I think I would like to think that's achievable.
Very optimistic.
But whether that means the actual program is run. Whether there's a better way to actually do what we're doing in terms of monitoring. I I I'm not convinced of that right now. I haven't researched. Um, I don't know if David does this work for any other outdoor facility. And has a better, easier method of making this happen. Um, but it these. Nuisances, noise in general is a very difficult thing to successfully achieve. Uh, and so it's a going to be a complicated conversation. And to Andrew's point, I don't know. Um, based on what we may get out of the strategic plan versus the extensive list I am already aware that we are committed to. Beyond even what we hear from the strategic plan, whether one year or two year is realistic in terms of how much effort we could put.
Real quick, if I can just, the other thing I meant to say to my point earlier is um. A fairgrounds and event facility like what C V E is, it's not unique in our country. And so this dynamic isn't unique to Essex Junction. And so if there are other models, I'm fairly happy to put money on that. These models exist in other communities. So to have staff do their research to look into what other communities are doing that have a. Uh, facility similar to C V E and how they're handling sound. Other models exist. And so to have the staff take the time to look into those other models is a significant lift. And so that's. All that I mean around if Chris is going to do that, that means Chris can't work on some of the ordinance stuff. Does that then take away from other things that? We'd like to see happen.
Can, can I say the the, and I understand your point, but I think. It also kind of may. I'm gonna be clumsy in my wording, so excuse me. It also kind of make, it sounds like it makes the assumption that in twenty twenty seven or thereabouts, that staff will have been. I anticipate we're gonna have the same conversation in twenty twenty seven, the staff doesn't have bandwidth. So at some point, we need to make this a priority. While I think a fair number of us hear complaints about noise, generally speaking, much in the same way that we generally hear a lot of complaints. About traffic generally in this community. I don't know if waiting till twenty twenty seven is the. It feels like it's um, I I'm willing to go a couple of years. I don't know if I'm totally comfortable with it. I I think that. I agree that the two agreements that we have should probably be time aligned. But again. I know that we're gonna come out of the strategic plan, you know, there's gonna be stuff there. But we're still working on stuff that we're digging holes out of before. And I just don't know in twenty twenty seven, we're gonna feel like we're in a better place.
I think what it will give us is um it's on the roadmap. At twenty twenty seven, if we do two years, that really means one year before they have to start staff, we'll start to work on it. So we're really only buying a year. Because it's gonna take six to nine months minimum to probably work through this, imagining, and then negotiate it. And get something in time.
I mean, I'm. I'm okay with keeping it at the length of time that it is. But every single time we talk about this contract, this conversation happens. Every single time because we can't wrap our heads around it. It's complicated for us, you know, small minded city councilors. And it's, alright, I'll just, for me, it's complicated. It's complicated for the neighbors. Then there's their varying feelings about it. And. The only thing that's consistent is the complaining. So I think we need to commit, like if we're gonna go for the full four years, we have to commit that in year two. We commence with research and. Conversation to make potential amendments or changes to the policy, to the procedures, to the agreement. If we don't, if we just said, let's leave it at two thou- twenty twenty seven and then not make any plans to do anything. Then we will have this exact same conversation probably around this time in twenty twenty seven. And I might not be at that table either. And a whole new group of councilors will kick the can down the road again. So I, if we are to go to the two thou- twenty twenty seven. Uh, extension, I'm not gonna do it unless we absolutely agree that we are gonna revisit this process. And revisit how we uh set these levels.
I would agree. We probably had this conversation the last time to some extent. And you know, I don't know how we, you know, we can't do anything concrete to commit that, but um.
I mean, you you could make a motion to approve this through twenty twenty seven with. Specific effort to really look at it, starting at the same time in twenty twenty six. No later than that same time in twenty twenty six to actually.
Yeah, and there is a section in here that says that they, I'm paraphrasing, if the city were to revisit its sound or noise ordinance. We'll find it probably when I get home, but um, something to that effect. Yeah, I don't need to find it now, but um.
Yeah, I mean, certainly nothing prevents us from. Having started the conversation earlier.
Also worth noting, um, just for fairness, um, C V pays for this testing. There is benefit to us having this agreement in place and having this relationship. You know, they're, you're in this agreement, uh, willing to to make sure these levels are reached and and to fund that effort. Um, so I just think wanted to actually make that.
No, I think this year was about a six thousand dollar expense to monitor. Sound, more than that? Yeah, okay, yes.
A little more.
Uh, yeah, um, no, it's um.
It's significant.
It's a significant expense. And it's easy to say, well, the price of a concert ticket, what's that? You know, our police bill this year during the fair, which we cannot thank Essex Police enough. We wrote a check for ninety one thousand dollars. So it does, it is a significant when you kind of add it all on there, but again, to her, we're happy to pay it.
And you know, again, that that's, this is a mutually beneficial agreement, so. So I don't know, I mean, we've we've kind of gone round and round. Let's do a a public to be heard session. While councilors think about it, hear what folks have to say. Um, anyone in the room have anything to say that want to comment on this? Doesn't look like it. Uh, online Steve, Stephen?
Uh, hey there, um, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of this, but I did hear uh a um kind of a request or a. That that you folks um wouldn't mind having more information about how sound works. I'm an electrical engineer. I don't speciali- specialize in audio, but um, I can, I can give you a two minute class if you like. Maybe one minute.
One, one minute?
Yeah, sure. Start, I mean, not including the preamble.
I mean, I'd only say that, uh, Steve, because because we do have a sound engineer in the room.
Oh, excellent. Well, there you go. Well, I I guess the only thing that that I noted is I think um, a couple of you spoke about limits, the A D D B limit. I think is the minimum, uh, that that's, I'm sorry, that's the maximum allowed before OSHA requires um, uh, noise, noise protection for employees. And I don't know what the, and and that's for continuous, uh, not necessarily all day, but that's continuous sound. And I think the, there's a limit for sort of instantaneous or, you know, temporary noises. That's probably fifteen, you know, to between ten and twenty D B higher. One thing to note, I think Raj, actually, you also mentioned the number eighty three decibels. Every three D B or three point oh six D B is a doubling in sound volume. And on the other side, every doubling in distance uh divides the sound by a quarter. Or it divides by four, so you have one quarter of the sound pressure at at a double the distance. So when thinking about how far the the measuring devices are from the source and how far the neighbors, uh, you know, and. Complainers, well, which I have been one, um, not for the fairgrounds, so. You know, uh, if you double the distance, it's a quarter of the sound or six D B lower. So just food, just food for thought.
That's interesting because with light, doubling the distance is half the amount of light. So now I know sound too, so I do actually appreciate that.
Yes, right. And and for intensity, I think light is also a quarter because it's uh, it's actually a square. It's 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 on an expanding sphere, so the sphere has four times the area when it's doubled the radius.
We'll, we'll talk later because. We're going against my materials.
Sorry, it depends on optics and stuff, but you know.
Light expert photographer, so we're gonna talk later, Steve. Over coffee. Thank you.
I think this supports the complexity.
Correct. I think you're right. Alright, um, any other thoughts after that? No, do anyone have a motion they'd like to make?
Can I just recap before we make the motion? So are we saying that? We will renew for four with the caveat that or the requirement that staff begin. Investigating potential adjustments or amendments to the policy around sound. No later than November of the year before it's renewed. Is that what we're saying? Is that enough time?
Is there ever enough time?
That's, I feel like actually having a time bound is better. Because these projects can expand, it would limit the scope to what we can handle.
Can I ask a quick question in regards to that? Because thinking about the work, thinking about you said earlier in regards to looking at. Noise nu- nuisance within the L D C. Would this align with that? Or is that, or do you see this as being two very different things? Because I wonder if that couldn't be one discussion.
Yeah, I would think we'd have to do that all, we would want to do that all together to be consistent. And to cover all the bases, all the different kinds of noise nu- nuisance that were discussed.
The reason I bring it up is because obviously then we're also tabling the L D C discussion for that time.
I don't know that I would want to limit our ability. I I'm not in favor of limiting our ability to revisit any ordinance. Based on this timeline. If we come back to do sound for whatever reason, we'll do it. And this, all this, and it just doesn't preclude uh the city from doing this work whenever it feels like. Up until the next agreement has to be negotiated, if it, if at all. We don't, we don't have to have this agreement either. But I think all this does is say, at the very least, staff will start doing this work. And if, if. We end up, I would imagine, if we ended up doing any work around sound, we would invite C V and at some point to be part of that conversation. As a partner, um, just like we would do with any other entity or or member of the public and. If at that point, then we could renegotiate this if there was a purpose and that would be open to whatever mutually was mutually agreed. I mean, not to interrupt you, but I think I. So that's.
No, I appreciate that. But again, I wanted to make sure that that was all at least on the table and. Because I appreciate that. And again, I acknowledge that. It's just a matter of I want to make sure. Are they, are they really distinct things? I feel like what I'm hearing, the nods I got is that. There is alignment here with those two discussions, so.
Just outside of the agreement portion, if you make the motion about tasking staff to start this work at a certain time period. In two weeks, you can come back and say, you know what, that was the wrong date. We want to change that. So just because we make that motion now doesn't mean that it can't change in the future. So you don't need to necessarily worry about it in terms of the ordinance.
And staff can request a change. So do you have any specific language in mind?
I'll move that the city council approve the Champlain Valley Expo C V E sound indemnification agreement. As amended to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty seven, with the requirement that staff. Revisit. The policy. And L D C regarding noise nuisances, nuisances. No later than twelve months before the renewal of this contract. And authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I think that works. I also have a note that we will correct the numbering. Right now.
We'll add a number two.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Motion passes?
Can I just add really quickly? I really want to reemphasize what Raj said earlier that this is not a let's ding the C V E. Please don't think of it in that respect. Really just want to get a handle on how we deal with noise citywide. And this is a big, big part of that.
Correct. No, I appreciate that very much and we want to be good neighbors, think we are. I don't, I don't mean the category of noise nuisance, that kind of, you know, but I know it's a buzzword type of thing, but uh. Uh, but no, we, you know, it has to work for everybody. It has to work for everybody.
Thank you for everything you do for the city and for your patience while we work this out.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Alright. Folks need a break? Are we good? Five F, discussion and consideration of rental registry and inspection program. Chris is here.
Do you want me to share the memo or your?
I I can share, uh, oh, I guess I could, um, I can share them.
Well, Chris, you're getting this up just real quick for full transparency. There's a part of the memo that references some work. That students of mine in a class that I teach uh did. Um, my name is not on this because I didn't do any of the work. I did not direct any of the work. Um, but I was paid as a part of my work to connect uh these students with the city of Essex Junction. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. I did not profit from uh the re- the production of the report and or its findings, nor did I influence the findings in any way. And if you feel that I should refuse myself, I'm happy to go sit on the other side in the audience. Otherwise, I'll stay here if you're okay with it.
Any objections for Andrew?
Yeah, appreciate the disclosure.
Yeah, appreciate the disclosure. I can't see you Amber, but your silence tells me you're good.
He's all good.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, Chris, I guess, take it away.
So, yeah, I've uh, there's a memo that explains uh the uh proposal that we put together. But um. I think one of the most important uh parts to this is uh, is uh some of the. The data analysis that we've done behind the uh, the 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 issue altogether. Um, our rental units data. And I I want to make sure I can uh put this uh on the screen and uh, you you know. Answer any questions that that there are about that. So can I share as well? All right. So, um, committee development department said did some work with C C R P C to uh, try to figure out uh, where our rental units currently are and how many we have. Um, and what type of units they are, because I think this really affects? How this program will run, uh, if it happens. This analysis was done based on uh, from the grand list data. Uh, it centered around figuring out? When uh, the the owner, uh, the the landowner, uh, the mailing address for the owner did not match the? Physical address of that parcel. And uh, out of that, we found uh, that there were about two hundred seventy-nine uh, rental properties, and properties means parcels. Or lots. A thousand nine hundred fifty-four estimated rental units. And uh? There are, uh, out of that number, one hundred and sixteen of them are condominium units. And just for context, that's about forty-three percent of households? In Essex Junction. And um? So, yeah, you can see over here, there's there's a kind of inverse relationship between uh, the uh, the property counts and uh, unit counts, and that's because? Many, uh, there are a few rental properties with many rental units. And this is a map that uh? That uh, where where we try to map out where these are located. Uh, it's scaled? Uh, by size and but uh, but it's not proportional. Once it, once we get to about uh, two hundred, I just kept the same size and it's just darker. But you can see, uh, there are? Yeah, the rental units are spread throughout the city, except for the R one zones. Those are the the lower density places with HOAs. Uh, but the Pearl Street and uh, the the uh, the city center and also Autumn Pond, they're the uh? Big, uh, there's big concentration of uh, uh, rental units available there. And this over here is our only, I think, nonprofit uh? Uh, housing development uh, that exists.
Is that Wickham Woods?
That's right. Wickham Woods. While we have this up, any questions about? The location? Of rental units?
No, but help me put a pin in Wickham Woods. Try to remember to come back to that, actually, because I didn't think of that until you just brought it up.
All right.
Never mind.
So, yeah, so we took a look at uh, we classified the the units by a small landlords versus big landlords and, you know, we it was just basically anybody that's uh? Owned, uh, it this, this is a, this is a pie chart that shows the units? By the how many units are on that property? This just shows that's the multi? Unit, um? Uh, uh, properties really kind of dominates. And out of the largest, and these are the four largest landlords and how? Many units they own. Uh, one implication of this is that if we have a rental registry and inspection program, if? We can get uh, in touch, basically, if if we are good with getting uh? The major landlords on board. We are most of the way there in terms of getting like? In terms of revenue, but in terms of getting most of these uh, units covered. Yeah. That's that's it in terms of these, the uh, rental unit data. Any questions about that? So? Amber?
Thank you.
Chris, I'm just under trying, wanted to understand the distinction of why you pulled out the condos um, from the rental number. What with the, why the difference there?
So condos are just? Uh, we have, uh, like, the ownership is just distributed between? Many different owners on the same property. It's as opposed to uh, multi-units apartments where you we deal with one person. One person would register or one company would register, and we would have uh, everybody on board. It's, I would say it's? Condos are more similar to kind of detached houses in terms of how? We we would be dealing with the registration and inspection.
Okay, thanks.
So you're saying condo would register much like a rented whole house?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Because we would be dealing directly with the owners. And each owner would only own one unit.
Good. Yeah. Okay.
All right, so? The next big thing is uh, the draft ordinance. Hoping that's uh, that's everyone's had a time to uh, flip through that. There's? Going to, I mean, obviously, there there are opportunities to make amendments um? Multiple times before uh, before this is adopted, if if you decide to move that way. But um? Any questions to start? And I can put this? I can put this up.
I do have a question as you start. Can you uh, just explain uh, how much time and or how much effort has already been put into this? Like, coming to this point in time? This isn't something you've been working on in a vacuum? How did this come together?
Certainly. So, I mean, this all started well before I was here, and I understand that there was there was a? Uh, council direction to uh, to develop this? This program further. Uh, the planning commission has uh, taken uh, a major role? In uh? In coming up and and advising on how how to proceed with uh, with this ordinance and this program. Um, that has been uh? Over the last about six months, we've been staff and planning commission and the planning commission has been working uh, to? Contact a bunch of different municipalities around us who have uh? Gone down this path and and created a rental registry and inspection program. Uh, and got and and uh, we've looked at their policies to figure out what might be a good fit uh, for our purposes. The planning commission has then adapted uh, some of those, the uh, the other municipalities ideas uh, for the needs of uh, the the city here, and uh? This is the the product that they have recommended.
So you and the planning commission have been working on it for? With your role the last six months, but they've been working on it before then? So all in told, this has been happening for about a year or so, give or take a few months, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, in the ordinance, you um, specify short-term rentals. And I wanted to know if in the data you showed us about the apartments in the 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 collection of apartments in this city? Are short-term rentals included in that number?
So to a certain extent, those are estimates, and we, there there's no? Easy way to tell, but if somebody? Has a mailing address? On on the ownership, uh, you know, ownership records, um? On the grand list that is different from the physical address that would show up. So? I would assume if someone owns an extra property? For the sole purposes of uh, of renting it out uh, as a short-term rental? But they live somewhere else? That might show up? But we can't be sure. To a certain extent, if if this uh, if this ordinance is a? Is passed, uh? There would need to be outreach and there uh, to to the? City, you know, to everybody in the city to ask that everybody uh, self-serve, maybe this, people have to come up and? And tell us, and it's a violation. It would be a violation not to uh, register? If they were subject to registration.
Because my understanding of Airbnb? Is that it's owner occupied?
It is? Not in Burlington that you were required to have all short-term rentals or almost all short-term rentals uh? Uh, owner occupied, but uh, that is? Not necessarily a requirement throughout the state as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we don't.
As far as I know.
I know, I understand that, but? The platform of Airbnb is a mixture, as opposed to something like V R B O where you rent out your entire property. Airbnbs are also renting out individual spaces within occupied homes, and so if that's the case? And maybe it has changed since it started, but if that's the case, how will we account for? Rentals that occur in owner occupied homes, and if we don't? Make allowances for that, then? Would that mean that some folks that are renting out their properties are being targeted and others are not?
I don't think Airbnb operates that way.
So.
Four or five have not have been whole units. I've not had an owner there, so I'm not sure that's accurate, but?
Okay.
Sorry.
They do actually Airbnb has both, ha, ha, um, as a platform, you can search for uh, for rentals of both types. Uh, I think most people, most of their business nowadays are full units. But there are people, particularly people traveling alone, who don't need the whole space. Uh, who might rent from somebody, just a room from? Somebody's house. We have, in this uh? Draft ordinance, there's a specific definition that? That uh, that that covers short-term rentals, but? Only if they rent it out for uh, over a certain number of days a year.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
And? Along those particular lines, because talking about this? It's actually one of the questions I had specifically, because if we're looking at? Making sure that we are pulling in those short-term rentals, I do question fourteen days? Because of the fact that? Depending on how you look at it, where like, where do you want to draw this particular line? Because I have a feeling? Fourteen days is actually going to knock out a lot of Airbnb and V R B, because? I have a feeling most people use those services for a weekend or a week? Not necessarily? Longer than two weeks.
So this is cumulative.
Cumulative over the year of overall nights rented, not periods of rental per person or renter.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. That actually, because? It's a little foggy for me, so thank you.
But there is a question around whether we can inspect? Properties that pay rooms and meals taxes versus simply register them.
Right.
Is that right?
That's yes, and uh, yeah. That was a question I I saw from Amber a little earlier. So the?
Chris, I'm sorry. One more short-term rental question. In terms of? Compliance with safety rules. So if someone's renting out a short-term rental in their home? For more than fourteen days per calendar year? How much do they have to comply with local codes around things like sprinklers and ex emergency exits? Like, a a bed and breakfast has to have that. And a hotel has to have that. But someone renting out their basement does not. And so I'm just concerned about? Certificate of fitness being issued to these short-term rentals? When they might not be complying with other safety requirements that we have for other buildings.
So the idea is that we? What I mean, one of the requirements that's in in the in the ordinance is that? The property, the unit is in compliance with all applicable municipal and state's um, uh, regulations. There are several regulations that uh, that that come into play. Um, the the rental housing health code is one of them. That covers uh? That covers? What we normally consider rental units, uh, as well as, I think, a rental, if you rent a room from somebody, but on a permanent, like, on a long-term basis, that counts. At right now, the rental housing health code does not apply to short-term rentals, but? In uh, twenty twenty-two, there was a uh? In in this legislative session at that point, the state legislative session at that point, uh? There was a change, um? Uh, where the they, there was direction to move uh, to move the rental housing health code? To fall under the, like, instead of uh, being administered by the the uh, health authority, it'd be? In the future, it will be uh, run by the uh, fire, the Vermont Fire Safety Division. And also, it is in the future supposed to include short-term rentals. So? They, short-term rentals uh, pretty soon will fall under? Some rental housing rules. Uh, but even right now, they are required? They are considered a public building. And they have to meet fire code for that. Uh, the way? I've envisioned this uh, this position, um? So far is is that we, the the person we hire would not have to be a certified uh? State's uh, fire marshal? But it doesn't? Mean that they will turn a blind eye on on issues that is outside of the jurisdiction. They have, they always have the ability to call up resources from the state as needed.
Thank you.
Trying to figure out my?
Can I piggyback off that, Raj?
Sorry?
Can I piggyback off of uh? Chris's comment?
Yes.
So, Chris, you mentioned that short-term rentals are going to be included under the rental housing code, but you also mentioned the legislature, and I I guess what I'm just trying to be clear is? Was that? Something that passed the legislature?
Yes. Yes, this was, this was twenty twenty-two, but it took, it it takes, um, so? The rulemaking process to put the direction from what was passed in twenty twenty-two is? Is just uh? Uh, is just happening about now. Um? But I have been in touch with uh, the uh? Both the housing, I mean, both the health authority and and uh? Uh, the Department of uh, Fire Safety. About how how this would uh, work and, yeah, the the rulemaking process? Is now happening and it expect that it will cover uh, the uh, short-term rentals very soon.
So in the interim? Using the in the proposed ordinance, if we were to inspect short-term rentals? There is no ability to sort to inspect them under the rental housing code? Until this rule passes? Is that correct?
So? That is a good question that I think I I'm, I would? I would have to to figure out, uh, you know, I've talked, have to talk to a few more people to see if we? Have authority to inspect them? When we don't have the direct, when it doesn't fall under a jurisdiction to? Uh, to flag certain things or to require certain things, but I feel like we can always? We always have the ability to forward? Concerns that the inspector sees uh, to the appropriate authorities, as long as there's nothing that prevents us from going in in the first place.
Can I ask along these lines, again, since this work is based off of? Work that was already, has already been done, has already been implemented by other municipalities? Have any of those municipalities seen the difficulties? Or are they including short-term rentals, or are we going to be the first ones to be going after short-term? Not going after, but are we going to be the first ones that are including short-term rentals in this particular?
So? This, um, so many of the uh, municipalities near us also? Serve the function of, like, they come, they they also serve the the function of fire, uh, of state fire marshal uh, in inspecting? Uh, their buildings, right? And they they inspect the new buildings as well. We? Are not thinking we would do that right now, and that's that's the point of difference over here. They don't have? So basically, if the inspector is also a fire marshal, you would always have the jurisdiction? To at least? Inspect for fire safety issues that's required for all public buildings. There are, though, there are smaller municipalities that do not? You that that do things closer to the way of what's uh, what we're thinking over here. But whether or not they have a specific? But whether or not they have a specifically uh. Regulated short term rentals, that is actually something that uh that's. I can do a little more research on.
It appeared to me, just looking at Burlington, that they require their, them to register, but they're not inspecting them. Um now, I could have, I could have read that wrong, and I think to Marcus, your question. I I tried to do a little bit of digging on where South Burlington was, because they definitely have included. Short term rentals in their discussion, but I couldn't really, I I looks like the last conversation they had was in August. And there didn't happen to be any conversation thereafter. So I, yeah, I don't, I couldn't find anywhere that was actually inspecting short term rentals. But that was just based on my quick research.
So Amber. Uh inspect short term rentals as well. And my understanding of what Burlington does is that they have, uh they classify short term rentals differently depending on. Uh whether or not it's uh like one room within a house, uh whether it's owner occupied. Uh and how many days a year. Uh I think there's, there's two levels of it and there's some. At a certain threshold, they, if you pass a certain threshold, I think you still get inspected.
You okay with that answer? You look like you're thinking about it.
I'm thinking.
Okay, keep thinking.
I am thinking. I I I think um I didn't look at Winuski too in in too much depth. Burlington obviously has a minimum housing code in addition to the rental. State rental code, so they have a, they have an entirely different um. Set of rules that they're looking at when they're going into to buildings and inspecting um. But I don't know if Winuski does that as well, and that might be their distinction between why one does and. Does not. Again, it goes back to my question about can you inspect currently? Based on. The uh state law.
So I've got a question around, I've got a couple of questions. Um one is. Should the legislature pass a statewide rental registry, get it passed the governor? What happens to all the communities like ours that already have? Are we superseded and this goes away? Um which will matter to our structure of how we're dealing with this budgetarily and. Placement standpoint, so. Do we know? I'm sort of feeling like the states proceeds and everybody else's goes away. So because the the last summary of the last bill that went through, for instance, the fee schedule was vastly lower. And some other aspects of it were different than what municipalities have done, so I just want to make sure we're. We're able to continue this program, right? And then we just supply data. Okay. Okay.
And the only caveat being that the legislature can at any point in time decide to change the bill.
Sure, of course.
And if they do, since we are creatures of.
Right.
State, they can say, thank you, but we don't care, we're going to change that bill, so. I wouldn't let, personally, I wouldn't let that potential be anything to to hear the progress.
No, but I think I think that answer is good enough, because I think, you know, there'll come a time when we've got a significant number of apartment units in the state. Under these programs, so it'd be very difficult, I think, politically for them to just nix that.
But I will say that should be, for for me, it's more motivation to get this done sooner rather than later.
Sure, yes.
Also that we're not requiring owners to register into different places, that they can just stick with.
Right.
With one system.
The other question I had was um, let's say, uh we've got a, I think of several, um somewhere on the spreadsheet. Uh rental property is inspected, how how much of the entire property is inspected? So will they get a certificate of fitness, whatever we're calling it? If there are any number of any one or more other normal city ordinance violations. So if the building passes, if the if the unit itself passes. But they haven't addressed, an ordinance violation is discovered and or they haven't addressed an an ordinance violation on the property. Will they still get the certificate? Will they still get the passing inspection?
So that is, that that is a detail that I would say is not. Covered specifically by the ordinance, but the ordinance does say that. Uh a property can be issued a certificate of of fitness with some minor violations. But then there there would need to be follow up. But major violations, uh which are not specifically, uh I I. I think there there was a list of the uh of uh major issues that are. So bad that you they they would be required to take remedial action immediately. So if if anything falls under that category, um those would be major violations that.
Major violations of this particular ordinance or any city ordinance. Do you know what I'm saying? So we have a property I'm thinking of. Under this program, the property, the apartments itself, the house would have to be inspected. It might pass. Certainly, there are three or two. Probably two. Ongoing. Violations. And I guess I'm just wondering at what point do. Um those impact this. Um I don't want to hold this up for that, and I don't also want to tell somebody they have to. Not have a place to live. While they figure out an issue. So I I guess it's, it's layered, you know, people. If we're help, we're trying to help renters, let's say. So let's say there's an issue with the structure of the building, there's no fire, there's no smoke alarms or there's something. Um that's not been dealt with. Windows aren't shutting or whatever. We want to go in and inspect the property. We discover this, we want the landlord to fix it for the tenant. What we don't want to do is hold up a tenant's ability to live in the in the space, but we want. Other property ordinance issues dealt with. I just don't know if we're, I guess the conversation is around, are we going to leverage that? Or we're going to keep them separate?
My initial reaction is that. Everything should stay in its lane. If uh this person happens to go to. Let's say, well, the family property for the apartment inspections for this purpose, and they happen to notice. Let's say trash, but the dumpster is open and the trash kind of all over the place. I think this person would then follow the appropriate ordinance for the trash. LDC or ordinance around trash and follow whatever mechanisms are necessary and. Perhaps that's somebody else in the community development department that's handling that or. However, that works, that's the steps that will be followed for that. I don't know that we would. Withhold that uh certificate of fitness associated with the rental ordinance. Because there's a land development code violation.
Good, good, okay.
Yeah, and and I would echo that as well, like and that would allow us to stay true to the. Objectives of of this program, you know, at least to propose the objectives of this program, which. Number one is to ensure the adequate life and save, safety of all uh residential rental properties.
Part of the reason I ask is because our intention is to have the same person doing some of the same work. And so I just want to kind of understand how that's for for the conversation, just to understand how that's going to come together.
Right, and the same person can wear two hats and it could be under different, uh the enforcement mechanisms can be under. You know, two different places.
Can I ask about the rules to which we enforce, so that I understand from? Any particular building, let's say it's built in nineteen sixty or it's built in, you know, two thousand. Twenty-three. Are we holding that building to which standard, the standard to which it was built or the standard to which our ordinances are today? And I ask because obviously. Building ordinances change over time, as technology changes, things of that nature, just natural progression. So I'm wondering what rule set we might hold a particular building to. Because it might not be. It might not be a safety issue, but it may not fit the current code, but it fit the code at the time, and I don't know if that's. So anyway, that's that's.
So we don't have building codes here and like municipal bill, uh municipal building code, this would be. Uh the 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 most common code to enforce would be the Rental Housing Health Code. Uh and that, eh the the requirements are pretty generic, they're they're, you know, things around uh. Smoke alarms and and uh points of uh uh points of egress and and mold. There, when it comes to uh. Fire safety uh regulations, which we would be able to to uh forward to. Uh the state fire marshal, there are differences between uh age of building, like I think newer buildings have. Stricter standards in terms of like the the fire, the the smoke uh smoke detectors need to be hardwired, some some stuff like that.
I don't, I know that we kind of jumped into the discussion, I don't know. You need to give a more overall on this or not, but I I have a couple of questions on pieces. In the ordinance that you've designed, so I don't know if right now is the appropriate time or you need. To share a more overall view of.
I was not planning on on uh going through the entire ordinance, I figure that's uh, that's in your packets. Uh but if, yeah, I'm happy to take any questions, uh but just so, you know, I think we'd also want to. Uh talk about the uh costs and revenues and uh and uh. Public engagement uh before the end of.
Yep.
The end of the day.
So why don't you um. Why don't you ask your questions, Marcus?
So let me, okay, let me ask about. In the ordinance, there is the mention about um local emergency contact. And the, the way that it's written in here is that they are required to have a local designate for emergencies. And I'm curious about this. The local designate, I'm not sure how we're enforcing, where that happens. That we're enforcing that a rental unit has to have a local designate, and I wonder if it's even appropriate. Because. Again, I'm not sure where this language came from, and I don't know what what that specific reason is to have that there. Because I think that a property can be managed remotely. It would be, I think, preferred that there's somebody local, but. You know, an owner for their property can still call a plumber in order to resolve a plumbing issue in their renter's. House, for instance, or that, you know, their apartment. So I'm curious about this language.
So this one, we did not make it up from scratch, this one actually, I I think this uh. This came from uh Winuski, uh so they must have found that it was at least. They they must have not found a legal, legal issue with requiring it. I mean, they haven't, I mean, they they must have not found it, it might be there. But I would say from reviewing some other municipalities as well, they're like Winuski wouldn't be the only one that requires a a local emergency contact. But is it legal that is a, that we can certainly um uh, you know, double check that with our. With our city attorney.
That's right, in Winuski's.
So. Well, so do you think, Marcus, do you think that is bad policy or do you think like potentially bad policy? Or do you think it's just, it's just um maybe unenforceable?
I think both. I think potentially both. Because I think that. It's good, you can have good and bad, local or remote. Owners, right? So I don't think that it necessarily matters. The enforcement, uh you know, I don't, I don't know what the legal precedent. So, I mean, that's my, that's my gut feel, and that's why I asked about where that kind of came from and the understanding around it. It felt like a very. It, I thank you for pointing out that it's in the Winuski one, because I thought it might be coming from Burlington's, which obviously has a very. Narrow and has a particular lens that they're looking for. Um not that it's good or bad, just understanding where it's come from. The other, just generally speaking, if in a multi-unit building. If one, if there's a violation in one unit, is the whole building then not get the? Get the certificate or is it just, you know, the certificate, I guess, applied to the unit or to the whole?
My intention is that it's uh by unit, uh in order to contain, you know, any any effects, but. There is. There there is a provision here to to say that say the frequency of uh that you are inspected. May uh depend on a number of factors, including uh uh violation history. Uh and that violation history can be associated with. A specific la- like with the landlord as a whole or the property as a whole, you know, because age of property was also one of the, one of the factors, the risk factors that was, that was um. Uh eh eh that was included in that uh in that clause. So if you have. A couple of units in a thirty unit building that's uh, that are problematic, it might cause. Other units to be inspected a little more frequently, but it's not, you know. At at least as written, it's not intended to hold back everybody else.
But but to clarify, if upon that inspection of the multi-unit building, there's an issue that affects. In the common area that affects the whole building. What, what do we envision? That doing. Well, in the lobby and it's clear that the sprinkler system is just, I don't, I mean, but if there's. You know, is there an op, it seems to me there would be. That would be, could be. The potential, I'm just curious how that scenario might play out.
I I think in that scenario, that's a contact to the uh fire marshal. That's not something that we would be looking at in this program, which is a apartment specific. Again. Simple enforcement. If it's the building itself that falls under the fire marshal's perspective, I think.
Right, and if there's something major with the building that is clearly affecting. Many units, the affected units, I I think, because like, let's say there's, the the roof is leaky or the siding. Gets gets water and there and there's mold. That would be a problem with the building. But it would affect all, it would affect multiple units. And I I think we would have, we we would be within our rights to to withhold the certificate of fitness for. Those units that are affected or the whole building, if the whole building is affected. But there's always the 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 option of just going to the state, like regardless of if we, if. A unit is issued a certificate of fitness, we can always forward any, any concerns to a state fire marshal or any other. Um authority uh. At the state level.
You mentioned the age of unit risk, and I noted that in the reading. That obviously you say at least, in the ordinance, it says at least every five years, a housing code inspection for each rental housing unit. Or short term rental unit is required. Later on, there's a discussion concerning new construction and it requiring. A inspection prior to occupancy, but a certificate would only be given for four years. And I'm, and it doesn't feel consistent to say that we inspect, we a minimum of every five years. But for a brand new construction, they're only going to get it for four versus five.
That's a good point, that may be a mistake. Um where where exactly do you have it open? Uh just so I know.
Did note that, yeah, it's on um. Page nine of the, yeah, of the ordinance J, uh so that's.
Okay, yeah, I got that. I will, um, yeah, I will note that.
Um the other thing I wanted to bring up is. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is within the mention of reasons to deny an issue of a certificate, the number one, I know that this is probably not based on priority, so, but on point one, it says the physical condition or use of the property constitutes a public nuisance. Is this duplicative of our own nuisance rule or ordinances? Does this need to be called out? Or I, I, I'm not sure, I guess, what that might specifically apply to. Because a nuisance ordinance that we currently have, if somebody throws a party, right, they could be in violation of our current noise ordinance. But is that applied to here, to removing a certificate or denying someone a certificate?
So this was actually, uh, yeah, thi- this, this came from uh, Wenuski's ordinance. We actually, we took something else kind of along the lines of that, which uh, the planning commissioner thought maybe that's too much, and they, they took it out. I think that's, this is a, this is a, a good point to have a conversation on. And if, if it's not something like if we want to deal with public nuisances separately and not leverage people's housing um, over this, uh, this, this is something that can come out, but as it's written right now, it's uh, the certificate of fitness can be leveraged based on that.
Which kind of goes back to the question I had before about are we going to leverage certificates of fitness for other ordinance violations? So I would say no. Can see some residents having frustration with that if it's a problem property in the neighborhood. But I think Regina's comment about keeping things in their lane really focuses us on the life and safety aspect of this and keeping it focused. I think if we find that we have problem properties and our ordinances aren't adequate to deal with them, and that's a different issue. I guess, is that kind of getting to what you're?
Yeah, and.
Unless, of course, there's something, well, still, if it's something someone's done to the building to damage it or the property itself, we have ways to deal with that.
No, no, the, thank you. Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, because I think it needs to be explained for the general public. It took me a minute to, to figure out what it specifically meant was attractive nuisance. So in point two, under the reasons that we would deny a certificate, it says any physical can, physical condition, use or occupancy of any rental housing property, short-term rental property, or whatever, I, sorry, I can't pronounce it. Um, that is considered an attractive nuisance to children, including but not limited to abandoned vehicles, appliances, basements, and unsafe fences and structures. After researching it, I get it, but I want to make sure that I kind of call this out, because I think generally speaking, the general public looks at this. I just want to make sure that we call it out, like what is an attractive nuisance? Why is this being called?
So, right, um, I, I think if we go on the principle of keeping uh, you're keeping issues in their own lane for, in terms of regulation, this is something that can be removed as well. Um, I think Wenuski included this and, and several other things, because this is, this is a point at which every few years, this, the municipality has leverage. Um, and without this, you know, there are other ways of, of uh, of enforcement. Um, but it's I guess uh, when Wenuski came up with this, they must have thought that it was uh, um, this was an opportune time to uh.
I mean, I can see the point, because look, every different avenue of enforcement you take adds the expense.
Right.
And to both parties, frankly, not just the city. Um, it adds extra fines, it might accumulate, accumulate or duplicate fines that are unnecessary, and it would increase the likelihood that something would end up in civil court.
I'm not suggesting this.
But I, yeah, but I think it, maybe it is worth. You know, there, there are minor violations listed, right? You know, that this may not remove the opportunity to get a, a certificate of fitness for a period of time until it's dealt with, right? So I think it's just something worth thinking about. Like, how does, how does that play out? And again, coming back to the central idea of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I got that question, and I think I'd also have just what is an attractive nuisance?
And I think I get it from the standpoint of, again, and I don't recommend pulling this out, because things I think about are clear safety issues where children don't know the difference. It, it is one of those objects or things that children can't differentiate between it being safe or unsafe. But it's, you know, I was a kid and used to play on the open field, and guess what? There were broken glass bottles. Nobody cared. Now we care. So this would be one of those things that would be covered under that, and I get that. But I think in reading the language, sometimes I wonder, this has to do with the way that ordinance is generally run. Sometimes language is used in such a way to try to be specific, try to cover the area, but the general public has no idea what that means, so I think I'm clear, but I just want to make sure that we understand.
I think in some ways, part of that is because it's been tried in courts, so it's been defined in a court case as what that means. So then that way, when something needs to be enforced, there's some kind of backing there besides somebody saying what they think it means. So totally agree that our or- many ordinances are confusing as all can be, uh, but generally because it relies or falls back onto a court case.
Yeah, thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I was going to say attractive nuisance is a legal term that brings me back to my law school days and so I have a little bit of PTSD over here, but uh, that's exactly what I was going to say, Andrew.
Yeah, but you said a lot smarter and.
Well.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of school of student loan debt. That's what it does for you.
So there's some more PTSD. We're going to send a counselor over. Might call the wife, call my wife. Um, are you good? Do you have any more?
Go ahead, go ahead. I, I think I saw, but.
Section twenty point oh eight issuance, uh, it's page six of the actual ordinance numbers. Um, I'm just looking at paper, so I apologize about the packet. Um, twenty point oh eight B seems duplicative of D, and I'm really just trying to understand what the difference is. One has more words.
Which one was this? Well, section one.
I'm not going to read off the, the section twenty point oh eight. Um, B and D seem to say the same thing. One says it longer.
Right. Um, this, I, I I don't know, I could say that there's a reason why this has to be separate. This could probably, these two could probably be combined.
Okay. Sorry, that was a little more housekeeping than, than question about it, but um, and think we have enough questions that we're definitely coming back to this. But my, mine just sort of jumped now to um, the revenue stream, the fees and stuff. But does anybody have any questions about the other portions before we jump to that?
Before we jump to that, I have one question to follow up on Marcus's question regarding um, the local emergency designate or the emergency contact. I'm just wondering, in the case of a townhouse or a condo or a single home rental, would that default to the tenant? Like, if you're a person who owns a home, but you're spending, you're a retiree and you're in Florida, and you're renting out your condo to somebody, and you don't have a property manager or anything like that, or any designate left in the state of Vermont, would it by default go to the tenant? And is that appropriate? And is it just appropriate for us to require that? If there really isn't anybody?
Or could the owner just simply designate that person and that's that? Because all we're doing is asking them to tell us who they, who they want to be a local contact. And maybe some of this is around, what are we, what are we trying to gain from having that information?
Right, like when I think about this, I think about who's the person that's going to get called to deal with the gas leak if the tenant is calling in a gas leak, or, you know.
It's a health officer contact, right?
Should the tenant be required to be the default superintendent of that property? Yeah, I mean, that's really what, what this is asking. So what do you do when you're a single owner and there's one tenant and the owner's not in state? That's my question.
So I, I, I think that's uh, that's something I can uh, research a little bit in terms of best practices and uh, and if there's any I, I can at least see if, if many municipalities are, are asking for, for uh, this local contact, and I think if many are, at least that might be some.
I can definitely see the benefit.
Yep.
I mean, look, if, if we're not getting answers out of someone in Arizona.
Right.
Um, with a property here that's having issues and the tenant is sort of beside themselves, or we're about to fail an inspection, and that person's unresponsive. Now that the person who's the designate isn't legally responsible for anything, right? But at least we have someone to go to, to help us out on this. I can, I can sort of see the logic, but I don't know if, how beneficial it is.
It may imply an additional cost for the property owner who has to then engage a property management company or a lawn guy or whatever, just thinking about unintended costs.
Along those, along those lines, again, if, if you were to default to the renter themselves, then the owner is not being represented. Fairly is the proper term, but they're not, they're not going to be represented wholly because of the fact that the interest of the renter is very different than the interest of the owner.
Yeah.
So.
Um, sorry, not you. Amber, sorry.
It's okay. Um, before we jump to the fee schedule, um, one question that I had, Chris, was about the transition and how we go from zero to twelve hundred and do all of these inspections. Is there some kind of um, process that needs to be built into the ordinance that says, because as it's written right now, it says everyone gets a provisional certificate of fitness out of the gate and then needs an inspection within ninety days. So I'm pretty sure we're not going to get to every inspection within ninety days. So how are we handling that? How are we handling that transition into this program?
So, so I think ninety days is actually referring to something else. Uh, it's like the increased fees you would be subject to if you don't, if you don't deal with issues within ninety days. Uh, but it does say there is a, there's a, in twenty point oh six, it says sixty days upon, like, basically, you, you have to um, you have to schedule an inspection within sixty days of being requested uh, an inspection. So the intention is that you would be able, like, we're not going to request the inspection until we're ready to, to, to move forward and, and inspect a property during the rollout. Um, and that some properties could be on provisional status for four years. I mean, that, that's entirely possible. Wenuski does, they, they, they do a flat four-year uh, uh, reinspection cycle. And when they launched, some people didn't get inspected for, like, they were, they were paying the fee but not being inspected for, un- until the fourth year. And that, I, I think that's, that's likely um, to happen as well over here. Does that answer your question?
It does.
And then in that scenario, right, so if they waited, let's say, four years, and they got a five-year certificate of fitness, then they would have had one inspection in nine years.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Which isn't, it's not a judgment, it's just sort of like making that clear.
Right. And um,
Presumably.
Like, it's like, if they do very well during that one inspection, yeah, that's, that's entirely possible. But it's also, if they do poorly, they may be required to be inspected again the following year.
And presumably during that period of time, let's say for, the one to four, um, as we're transitioning into this program, if we take a complaint, the health officer takes a complaint about a particular property, that would, I would presume that would bump that person to an inspection, getting an inspection of the property as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It says somewhere that uh, it, it says somewhere that we can inspect kind of like anytime as necessary.
Yeah, and just to point out, so the part of the intention of this program is to ensure that we are proactively inspecting and it just, it doesn't remain solely a tenant-based system. That doesn't in any way need it precludes any tenant-based complaints along the way.
Right.
Or um, doesn't require us to uphold the rental code and also the health code.
Do we want to go through the proposed budget first, or do we want to go through um, the proposed fee schedule options?
So I guess the, the budget leads to the, the uh, fee schedule option, so I, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, so the, the biggest items on there is going to be, in, in descending order, is going to be labor, um, then the software. Or actually, software and vehicle could, depending on what we choose, um, could be about this uh, similar. So in terms of labor, uh, I think we, we, if we assume that this uh, the, the person we hire is at the same uh, pay grade as the planner, uh, which I'm hoping could be the case, so you know, to, to get someone that has the uh, that's uh, that is the expertise to, to do, to do the inspections, but also to have the flexibility to uh, take on other tasks related to all sorts of, you know, enforcement and also policymaking, if uh, uh, policy recommendations, if uh, if, if it comes down to needing that, um, that would be nine, that would be, you know, all in cost of about ninety-seven thousand dollars per year. Um, I think there is a question over here as to whether or not it's fair to attribute all th- this entire cost to the rental registry and inspection program, because we are expecting about, about half their time would be dedicated to this and half their time to other tasks within the department.
So just to be clear, this ninety-seven, three-twenty is that entire position or the fifty percent?
Entire.
Okay. Okay. Sure.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, just want to make that clear. So let's say this is half an FTE, that would be roughly half, okay?
Yep.
Can I ask this question? But I want to ask you if you consider whether or not it might be easier or efficient in order to give like a mileage stipend or to give mileage to whoever holds this particular position versus purchasing.
So I think it would be cheaper for the city. I'm not sure it would be fair. Uh, the, the cost, like, the, the real, you're using a vehicle in Essex Junction not to cover much distance, but for time. You'd be working out of it uh, for a lot, you'd be turning it on and off a lot. But the other important piece here is that they are out there doing proactive inspections and enforcement. Um, and I think it is important for, for their safety and for, so this, for their professionalism, that this, that, that it's an official vehicle that is, that can clearly be identified as an official uh, municipal vehicle.
Yeah, I would hate to have an employee, there's so many scenarios of having to do my job for twenty years with my own car. You know, someone shows up and has a negative experience, now their car is known. Um, and all, all of that that goes with it is first and foremost, it's a safety issue. But over and above that, they're getting tires on, the car's in the shop, transmission fails, and we're not doing inspections? I mean, I think this is just, I think in the grand scheme of things, it's covered. And I would put a plug in to get a plug in. Um, or really kind of leverage some kind of, um, clean vehicle of some sort. Um, I think long-term, it'll pay for itself.
I'm thinking we should be getting a small electric vehicle.
Yeah.
Like, all, altogether, because this would require a lot of so, I, it, it would be a lot of short trips, which is actually a pretty rough one. In, internal combustion engines have been not so bad for, uh, electric.
Yeah, and, so it just sets us on a good path, but.
Yeah, no. And I brought it up for discussion, but
Yeah.
the, um, along those same lines, though, again, timing of things, right? Like, you hire a person on day one, do you have vehicle on day one? Are we getting the vehicle beforehand or after? You know? Can we still manage within this particular budget? Let's just say, we hire the person first, car comes later because of the way purchasing works, we prepare to do mileage or something of that nature in the interim so that they do their work before we have this vehicle necessarily.
That should be possible.
Yes, all, all the questions that we've been thinking through and will continue to think through when we're trying to have a solid plan together, including, uh, you know, totally get the desire and drive for the electric vehicle.
There's puns, there's puns everywhere, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, another thing that you can look at is, are we replacing a vehicle in the city elsewhere? And is, does there have to be a vehicle that can be used? Like, so we'll be investigating all, all of those, uh, all of those options. Certainly want, uh, it is incredibly costly adding a fleet, adding a vehicle. So
Yep.
Uh, certainly would prefer not to do it, I think a hundred percent for this position, it's, it's really necessary, and we'll figure out how to do it the best way.
There's also gonna be a period of time where this person needs to come on and get things going, right? Are we, so?
Yep.
I think there'll be, I don't know what that period is, but there'll be a period of time where they're not out in the field necessarily doing this work there.
That's right.
My.
But yeah, the mileage reimbursement for a period of time might be necessary just because it is impossible to actually get paid.
Yep. The software subscription blew my mind. To be honest with you, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I'm in shock.
So, the, um, we've looked at several options and it is certain, like, I put the highest one plus a little cost escalation here just in case, in order, in, in terms of setting, uh, the, you know, in, in terms of planning. But there are, there are options that are less costly. But there are, you know, the, the, I think the, the best software that I could find out there has, uh, capabilities that I think have, has the ability to save on labor significantly and also identify, you know, work with, uh, uh, analyze data more effectively to, to identify potential, uh, rental units that we might be missing. But, uh, I'm certainly not set on it and, and I take your feedback, um, seriously about, uh, about the cost.
Yeah, so that, that really is, there certainly are cheaper options. One of the things that I think will be a question that we will figure out as this goes along is how realistic is this halftime situation? That this work can be done in fifty percent of the time, the code enforcement and health officer work can be done in the other fifty percent of the time. But this particular software system provides a level of efficiency all within the administration and data keeping of the program that, uh, puts us in a place where we are comfortable with that fifty-fifty split. But it is not necessary. There are other software programs that can do this task at a lower price.
And I would say this was also, this, the, the expensive software has, uh, has more capabilities for, uh, a, the, a, a public-facing portal to, uh, for transparency, to, to, to see the status of rental, rental buildings, uh, that you're curious about. And the other, the, the, the less costly option does not have that. But, yeah, the, the differences are significant, there may be more negotiation, that's, uh, um.
Well, I just wondered, you know, on that transparency, on the dashboard side of it.
Right.
Like, if, if some of the lesser expensive software allows us to export and we can use the RBI we already paid for to take that Excel data or take that data and feed it into a or just take that data and make our own static six-month big snapshots.
Mm-hmm.
You know? I think my main, we don't have to go down the software road, but my main concern would just be, you know, picking someone that's if, if they should get bought or go away, we can get our data out.
Right.
Um, and make sure that we're not we're, we're being more forward-thinking in terms of how we, how we recapture our data. Cause I'm gonna assume a lot of it's probably gonna be cloud-based, what that means for privacy. That kind of thing. Any other comments on the budget from folks? All right, about fee schedule?
Right.
I mean, do you, is there anything you, you need to know in that regard from, from us for the budget?
I, I don't have anything, uh, specific. So, right, in terms of, uh, revenues and, uh, I put together two options, um, flat fee of a hundred fifteen dollars, uh, this would match, uh, or be similar to, uh, many of the municipalities around us. But the other option would kind of offer a volume discount. And this is really to reflect the fact that it is much more difficult to deal with many small landlords versus a one landlord that has a, a property manager that has the keys to forty units and they register once and you talk to them once. Um, just in terms of the time you would spend per unit, uh, you know, you would expect it to be significantly lower with volume. But option two does not generate as much revenue, um, unless, you know, be- because I'm, I'm thinking we, we don't want to increase the, the, the costs anymore for for the, uh, small landlords. You know, this would be a discount on the, on the high end, but not, not, uh, an increase on the, on the, uh, small side. So
I mean.
Option two would, uh, likely not, uh, you know, generate enough to cover the whole, the, the entire person, the, the entire FTE. But also, we're not expecting the full FTE of this new person we hired to be dedicated to rental registry and inspection.
I think the scenario you described is predicated on the fact that those forty units or twenty units, the property manager will have pre-arranged access and permission from all the tenants in the same day within the same eight hours. Um, and I'm skeptical that, that that's gonna be possible, and multiple visits to the same building are gonna be required. You know? I, I just totally get this, I'm just, I've been trying to think about scenarios where you know, small landlords could say, you know, they've already got the income from the, the bigger building and the bigger operation, why, why don't I get the discount for being a small landlord? So there's a couple of scenarios I'm thinking of, but Andrew, you have your hand up.
I'd keep it simple, go with one fee administratively, that would be easier, it's more consistent for everybody, they, it's more upfront. Assume then easier to, to implement overseas. I would just keep it simple.
I agree with, yeah, I agree with Andrew too, but I do have a question in regards to the time of sale. So, um, the time of sale, when, when we're talking about this, if, if I am a property owner and I have my certificate, and let's just say I'm a good land, you know, good homeowner or good landowner, cause I'm an awesome person. Um, so I've got my four-year certificate, three-year certificate, but I'm going to sell my property in the next year. Am I then going to have to pay these new fees again, even though I have an existing certificate that?
Yep. That's not, well, at least I was not, that was not in, uh, intended to be the case, there is, is, there's a time of sale out of, out of cycle inspection, that is, if you request it. So if your bank asks you to do something for the purposes of the sale, um, and your bank says we need something that, that shows you have just recently been, been inspected, uh, then we would, that, that, this, this hundred twenty-five would, would kick in. But it's not a requirement, it's not a municipal requirement.
Okay.
There is a municipal requirement to update, like, for the new owner to update the registration so that it, it's under their name.
To update the registration, but if, if I'm buying a property that has a good certificate, say, for the next year, whatever it is, for the length of time, do I need to immediately pay the fees for the, for those properties I just bought? Or do I pay that at the time at which the certificates come to an end and need to be renewed?
The, the intention is that it would, it would not cost anything to update the, the, uh, the valid certificates of fitness to the new name. But I can double, I can double-check that just to, just to make sure we've really covered that.
But the fee is paid annually regardless?
Fee is paid annually regardless, yep.
So they may, they may, I guess the question is, will they inherit the fitness certificate for its duration? And the ex, and the renew date for the fee, right?
Yeah.
That's what happens in Burlington.
Yeah, if they buy it in July, but it's not renewed until January, they keep that six, five months, whatever, six months.
Yes.
Okay.
That is how other municipalities handle it.
People have other questions about the, the fee structures, there are, this looks like we're leaning towards a flat fee. And again, this, this seems to cover the budget for the entire position. So that is beneficial? There are options, if we've already planning to cover the other half of the FTE. Would encourage us to think creatively about how we might put some of this back into the community. Number of things people could think about between now and then, some of, I mean, I like what Rutland's doing, for instance, with low-interest or zero-interest loans to go back out to landowners to improve their rental properties. I think things like that would really go to the intention of this program and, and improve our housing stock. It could be, um, you know, assistance for, for renters coming into our community that it might need assistance getting into a into a deposit or rental situation. It might include, um, what's the word, looking for the, um, we just talked about the planning commission looking at this.
Housing trust fund?
Thank you. Could go, you know, help us kickstart a housing trust fund. You know, really trying to use some put some of this intentionally back into that, um, area. Andrew?
It's a great idea, it's nine thirty, can we not?
Well, I just wanna just give them a direction, like, because if, if that's the kind of place we wanna go, we'll have to talk about it later. So, is that the consensus, do we wanna just keep it to, the question is for me, do we wanna keep it to covering the entire position, or do we wanna explore the other options? As a group?
And can I just add that I, I think, um, using it for other options, I think makes great sense. I think we would wanna see this program and how it works and functions for, uh, at least uh, two years, about three years before we figure out how that.
Great, great comment.
How that actually works and what actual.
So are you saying operate it as, as intended?
Yeah.
With the half FTE and half FTE?
Yeah.
Let it build up a fund?
Yes.
And then make sure it works?
Okay.
Great, 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 great. Okay.
To answer your question, I would like to see this, our program, this program cover the full FTE.
Okay. Timeline?
ASAP.
I meant this.
I know.
Okay.
So, right, so in terms of adopting an ordinance, uh,
Usually it's Amber.
You know, there's, there's just, uh, a requirement for one public hearing prior to adoption, and then if you make an amendment, you have to publish the changes and, uh, and warn another public hearing. But the warning period is pretty short, it's like three days. Uh, and that's minimum, the minimum warning requirement. So it's not like a land development code amendment, which takes multiple weeks if you wanna make any change. Uh, after passage, the ordinance is effective immediately, but is subject to rescission by special meeting if there's a petition that's signed over by over five percent of registered voters within forty-four days. So that, that's relevant in terms of scheduling, uh, you know, I, I, I don't know if you, if any of you saw the Gantt chart, that's also an, uh, a proposed schedule. There's some time between when, uh, the, the ordinance is passed and when we want to incur lots of costs. Because, you know, if it looks like there's gonna be a, uh, you know, if it looks like something's gonna happen within the forty-four days, you know, may, there, there could be a risk um, in terms of spending, you know, uh, lots of money before that. But likely a small risk, I'd say.
Andrew?
I am curious as to why, uh, a survey to landlords and this significant public out, what seems like a significant public outreach campaign that has gone well beyond anything we've done in the past is necessary for this effort.
So, okay. I think, so, the, the reason why I think it's necessary to reach out to all landlords is to make sure no, because there are the ones that, that, that are gonna be paying, and they're, they're the ones that are, that may face penalties for not, um, uh, for, for not registering. We wanna make sure that everybody knows about it before this becomes law. And also, you know, this, this would be the way to maximize compliance. But also to minimize surprises for anybody. Uh, and that, I think in theory, we could have also reached out to, you know, we could also reach out to everybody else, but like, if we were to minimize, like, I, I think I think that, uh, it strikes a good balance to, to only get the landlords that we expect we're gonna have to reach out to anyway.
Personally, I'm not sure what these results from a survey to landlords would mean to me if I saw the results. I don't know what the survey would look like, so that could skew it. A rental registry is something that is in existence in many other communities in our county, these large landlords are already doing it in other communities. This isn't a new thing. So they'll learn about it after, it's, in my opinion, they could learn about it after it's been passed. Uh, and we let them know, hey, this is something you're going to have to uh, contribute to whenever that point in time is. Uh, from my vantage point, if this helps to expedite the process, I would say let's do that. If this allows you to have more time to then focus on some of the discussion that I, to make those changes, I'd focus on that, and I just wouldn't do the, the survey, I wouldn't do the outreach to landlords.
So I wasn't, I wasn't thinking of a sur-, I don't know if there was a previous version of this where I forgot to take it out, but I, I, I thought about a survey and talked to Regina more, and I actually don't think a survey is, is, is necessary, but I do think outreach is necessary. This is more a, a push of information, uh, to, to let them know that this is happening. Um, if they ha, if anybody has specific concerns, you know, they would email, they would, they would email us, basically, or, or, or just
Or just come.
Get in touch, or come to the, or, or come to the, the public hearing.
Right.
And that, that was the intention.
Right.
I think, I think the worry is that we get responses back, and then the expectation is that this would go back to the planning commission for where it's been in a very deliberative, intentional and public process for about a year. And I am, I'm okay, um, personally, spending you know, a few hundred dollars letting them know that it's coming up, because I, I do kind of agree with you that they're the ones that are gonna be impacted, so we should, some of them don't live here. So if we have, if we have ways to do it, we will miss some.
Yep.
Um, right? Informing them this is coming up, and if we have a public hearing date, or how to stay, how to stay in the know. Um, and maybe just checking the CD website so they know when the public hearing is coming up, that's fine. Um, and maybe just checking the C D website. So they know when the public hearing is coming up, that's fine.
Yep.
Just don't want to give the impression that input is being taken to the point where it's gonna go back to the drawing board. Because we, we have an ordinance process and if we decide that we've got sufficient input, we can get, have a second public hearing.
Yep.
Which on this, this might not be a bad idea for that anyway, we'll see, you know, um, but.
So, yeah, yeah, I, uh, totally understood, I, I think this would be a push campaign for information. And we would word it very carefully. Um, but related to that is like, are there? Are there any, i- is there anything that, any specific feedback that, so, that you would like? Are there then, you know, nuts and bolts kind of operational, uh, how, how would you register and things like that? Uh.
Before, before we get there, I just wanna go back to this for a second there. With the public engagement, the first one, two, three, four. Three or four different, uh, parts of the Gantt chart are about a survey. So are you saying?
Oh, that, oh, that must, that, that's, okay, that's a problem.
So that, yeah, so are you saying that those shouldn't be there, that that should go out and then all those other boxes should then move to the left? To account for where we are in the time period.
So, part, so that was, uh, yeah, that, that was from a, uh, sorry, that was from a, a, a previous. Version of this when I was thinking about a survey, uh, that should come out. But if you look at just the, when. Like, we're unlikely to be able to make this go any earlier, just because of the timing of, uh, of council, uh, council meetings. Um, and holidays.
And we don't meet again until the twentieth.
Right, so just delete then the first three rows there and it just shifts up?
Right, yes. It would just, I think it would shift up, I don't think it would shift to the left.
Okay, appreciate, clarify.
Thank you for pointing it out, that's it.
Yeah.
So sorry, Chris, you were asking more overall.
Yeah, are there, are there any specific questions that, uh? That, uh. That, that need to be asked, or, you know, is, is this really, you know, focused on implementation and nuts and bolts of how that would happen?
Hey, just one more thing on the communication. I think once we. I think at some point throughout this, we need to notify tenants. So as. It's just something to think about. I don't know that we have it on the timeline, but as, I think part of this is tenant outreach as well, you know, we're. It's, it's establishing relationships with landlords, establishing relationships, or at least opening a channel for and informing tenants that it's here. So sometime, I don't know if there's a, is a, you know, the software or the process has a trigger so that when a property is registered. A letter can go out to the land, to the, to the tenant or the tenants to let them know that this. This is a thing. All that, not all landlords will let them know. This is how you contact. It, it would be an interesting way to, to establish a point of contact for tenants. You know, again, from a, from a life and safety standpoint, you have, you have an issue, you have a complaint. By the way, we're here, here's how you get in touch with us, that kind of thing. That'd probably be a very small financial effort.
Yep.
Possibly automated. Honestly, one letter. Just a thought.
Can I ask a question? No, no question.
You can always ask me a question.
No, no, I just wanna, I just wanna be clear because from what I've heard, I wanna make sure that, that I'm understanding from a timing standpoint. Are you okay? With the timing? I don't know what's coming up on the twentieth and I'm not suggesting. But. Are you potentially suggesting you would like to see it maybe even on our December twentieth discussion versus maybe in October? Based on how this is current?
In Andrew's utopia, yes, but that's the place that only I apparently enjoy. Uh, thinking about how much stuff Chris is going to have to do to, to make the changes that have been requested and to do some of the research. I'm assuming that that probably isn't possible. If it were possible, yes, that would align with the utopia.
I, I would agree. I mean, you know. Care and attention balanced against time, you know? The next eight weeks are very busy and full of holidays.
Alright.
Um, let us take, if there are no more counselor questions or question, yes.
I just really wanna thank Chris and Regina and the planning commission for the enormous amount of work that has gone into this and. This body has been asking for this for a very long time and it's really great that it has come this far. So thank you very much. This is a good thing for the city.
Second.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Very well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the kind words.
Alright, there is nobody in the room for public comments. We will go straight to Zoom and, uh, Annie, I saw your hand first. Uh, Annie Cooper.
Thanks. Um, I sent a bunch of links. I feel that I emailed them. I feel that. A lot of time in this discussion could have been saved by counselors educating themselves better on. How these things work. I, it's frustrating. Also. Do I understand correctly that fees will be taken in? Paid by people who have registered for rentals?
It would be, fees would be, uh, collected from landlords.
Right, thank, thank you, uh, thank you, Chris. So again, and I'm not trying to batter you. But put a financial policy in place. In the length of time that you're putting into this work, you could do that work. It is like. Having a heat centered house where you don't let leaks of air out, where you drive an efficient car. You, you want to close the gaps and it is a waste of taxpayer time and money if you don't. Stop and put a financial policy in place so that your staff, our staff, your staff. Can function in a healthier setting with a more efficient style of ingestion and outflow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess? Waszloski?
Hi there, um, hold on, I'm gonna lower my hand. Um, okay, so I was at this like community planning vision thing last Saturday. And I didn't hear anybody in any of the scenarios that we discussed, talk about the need to clamp down on the, what is it? Sixty-one percent of the units are by small landlords with less than four units. And, um, we still have this incredible, like disastrous housing shortage. We have the oldest housing stock in, in the country. And I understand that, but everything that I saw on that slideshow, it's like, I don't understand how we're coming to these conclusions as a way. Of improving the lives of people in Essex Junction. Oh crap, did I jump off the call? No, I didn't, okay.
Still here.
Um, like improving the general well-being of people, allowing people to age in place and not. Be forced out because taxes are insane or the additional burden for a small landlord are kind of difficult. Like, the, the press conference that Phil Scott said today called it a massive unit deficit, deficit that we're facing. That we're far below a healthy market. Um, Rattleboro has a housing finance agency. And to get on the rental registry, it's free. And the incentive is you can be eligible for funds to upgrade your rental units. And even if you're not on the registry, you can still apply as long as at least fifty-one percent of your tenants. Are counted as like middle or low income tenants. But like, I don't understand why anybody would not just secretly hide this from Essex Junction. So as not to have to go through extra hoops. Extra fees, like even the one in Rattleboro, every four years your zone will be inspected. And you only pay when they're doing the inspections because the registry itself is free. Therefore, it's actually stimulating compliance and stimulating an interest to be on the rental registry because. Like, like, why on earth would people wanna just sign up for another thing? I understand, oh, they're gonna face fines, but like, is that the community that we wanna cultivate? Is this the new Essex Junction is just gonna be feeing people to death? It seems like ever since. We became the city of the village of Essex Junction, it's, it's become harder and less fun to live here. Stuff that was free now costs money. I can't think of a single free thing that's offered anymore, but, um, like renters are already paying. Very high rents. There's no reason to be adding anything that a landlord could say is going to add to their burden of rent. Rattleboro, White River Junction, Morrisville, Burlington, Springfield, Berry, Bennington, Winuski, Rutland, Braintree, Brookfield, Randolph, Linenville, Middlebury. They're all creating units right now. And what you're doing, I don't know under, I don't know, like, how is it? How is it meant to improve our quality of life? Who is it actually serving? I hear you board members saying that you're so glad this is finally happening, but I don't know you. Like, I don't understand. Like what your quality of life is, that this is not something that could negatively impact you. Did you never rent property? Like, do you live across from a multifamily building that's falling apart? Is the city of Essex constantly besieged by phone calls from beleaguered tenants? Cause I kind of doubt it. There are so many measures in place for tenants who need help and there are lent, like tenant landlord handbooks. There's a C V O E O. There are, um, mechanisms in place for search of occupancy. There's a fire marshal in place who's really readily available. I was once looking at converting my unit and my, you know, my house into a unit in the basement. Because it was built like that for an elderly previous resident and it's quite easy to reach the fire marshal to find out what the requirements would be. It's quite easy to figure out how to get a certificate of occupancy. So like, why are we doing all this make work? It's so much money and it's like, I don't know, I just, I'd like to know what's this vision of Essex that this is incorporated in. Because it's not what I hear at the meetings and I don't, I don't know, I have rental houses on my street and I also have people in multi-units. And like, I never, I can't think of a thi- thing that is like, oh, go get them, but people are allowed to have. Child attracting, like vehicles on their front yard as long as they own the property. Like, it just feels we're becoming. Like, we're steering in this direction that is penalizing anybody who is poor or lower income. And we sure as heck don't want rental units in our town. That's all I hear when I, I hear this kind of thing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Alright, so. We are on to five G, which is a, and H, which are executive sessions. And.
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Most passes. Uh, reading file. Wanna go first or do you wanna?
I have a quick list.
Okay.
Um, so we, uh, applied for the V L C P welcoming and engaging communities program on November second. That was on your agenda last, uh, meeting, so I've applied before. The, today at the community, Chitting County Communication Union District, I handed over the brains, so I am. Out of that. Thank you very much. Tamara for stepping up with community member play that role. Thank you to everybody who participated in the strategic planning process so far, both the think tank workshops and the, and the survey. We will be, uh, coming out with more information on the next steps and how we actually, uh, get to the place of our prioritized list going forward. Um, the community development department has started the, uh, sign enforcement blitz. So sort of educational campaign of, um, working on those signs. So we've gotten some feedback from that as we expected. Uh, and we will, uh, continue to work on that. Um, and also we now have. Second appeal filed for that D R B decision on, uh, tax sweep. So, uh, just so hopes are aware of that.
Great. Anybody have anything else? Marcus?
I know I said this the last meeting, but since our last meeting, I went on a second ride along, so I wanna say thank you to the Essex P D again for allowing me. On Halloween to go out. Um, I had, I was riding along with Officer Greg, who is our traffic control officer. And it was another enlightening session and, uh, really great experience. And again, I would encourage everyone on the council and. Staff and public at large, I mean, take, take an op, take an opportunity, experience it so that. You can have, uh, some richer insight into the good work that's being done and. Again, uh, you know, get your questions answered about a public service that's being done in our community. So, thank you.
Great. I'm just gonna say really quick, um, extend condolences to, uh, the family of a former. Essex Junction Assistant Chief Robert Scott Morris, um, passed away this week, I understand. Served from seventy-five, nineteen seventy-five to twenty seventeen and also served as a assistant fire chief of the monitor, so condolences to his family. And, uh, a lot of firefighters at the fire department. And that's all I have. And also thank you to Ashley and the steering committee, um, for the work on the strategic plan. Appreciate it. Alright, uh, motion for executive session is in the packet. I see it, unless somebody has it open, otherwise I'll read it.
The one in the packet.
Go for it.
Okay. I move that the city council make a specific finding that general public knowledge of a contract would place the city at a substantial disadvantage. I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to one V S A three one three A one A. To include the city council and city manager.
Do we have to do this twice or can, okay. Uh, maybe a second on those two motions. Seconds, all those in favor, say aye to these two motions.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion is pass. Do it all again? We have a second contract to talk about.
Oh, okay. I move city council make the specific finding that the general public.
Do we have to?
Yeah, I mean, talking about contracts.
Is it general for contracts or is it for one contract? Right, so we have to make a motion.
It's by subject, not by quantity of subject. Like, we're, we're going into executive session to talk about contracts. We're not going into executive section to talk about contracts and real estate. That would be two separate sets of.
Right.
Movements.
Okay, great, alright.
Okay.
Great. We are not coming back with a decision of anything, so we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Raj.